Still adjusting, but I think I'm.
I think we're ready whenever you are.
Okay, I think we are. Go ahead.
Almost everybody in there's one more that's joining.
Tell me when everyone's in.
One person stuck in the waiting room. I think we have one that's experiencing technical difficulties. We'll see if we can. Can kick them so they can try and rejoin, but I think you can go ahead.
Okay, yeah, just let them in, I guess, when they. Get a connection. So. Let's start. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Chair Hugland. Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Freeman. Commissioner Maybe. Commissioner News.
Here. Next, we have public comment. Please be reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has control jurisdiction, supervision and or advisory power. Also, please state your name and address, or you can also put your name in the chat. If you'd like to wait in a in the waiting line for other times during the meeting. Please go ahead and state your name and address and. We're ready for public comment. Go ahead. Any public comment? I don't see any hands up or any names in the chat for our general public comment. I'm assuming people will have public comments throughout the meeting. Last call on public comment. Okay. Tonight, we have four consent items. We have consent items A through D. Do I have a motion from the commission on consent items A through D or any that you would like pulled for consideration?
Make a motion to approve consent items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Oh, we have, sorry, we have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Hugland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
Yes.
Commissioner News.
Or. Motion passes. I'm going to ask, can you guys hear my little heater that I have going? Okay, I don't want it to be distracting, so. Just checking. All right. Let's move on. Tonight, we have no proclamations. We have no scheduled public comments. We do have two public hearings. Our first public hearing is ordinance number 3005, an ordinance of the City Commission Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending the Livingston Municipal Code to modify any and all masculine and or feminine language to gender neutral pronouns. And this is our second reading. Mr. Cardes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the second reading, as you said, so if approved, it will take effect in 30 days. This effectively, we contracted with MutiCode to go through our city code and look for any not gender neutral terms, so firemen, policemen, anything in that order. They did a scrub of it. They came with a ordinance for us to pass, which is what was presented to you, and it cleans up all of all of the language that we had and makes it gender neutral. I think there are a few exceptions for legally recognized terms. Or terms of art or something like that. Courtney has a fancy word for it. But there's a couple of those that still remain because they are legally recognized. But outside of that, this will make the entire city code gender.
Let's open this public hearing to public comment. This public hearing is now open on ordinance number 3005. Do we have any public comment? It's a little harder to tell what. Lassie, are you raising your hand? I can't tell. I see a hand, but. Guessing not. No names in the chat. Okay. I don't think there is any public comments. This public hearing is now closed on ordinance 3005. Commissioners, questions or comments? On our ordinance. Melissa, go ahead.
Obviously, since Michael mentioned it, I have to ask Courtney what the fancy term is and what some examples are.
I would be pleased to answer that. I love when this stuff comes up. Nobody else gets to research stuff like this. So the term of art is workmanlike, and it has been in case law since 1759. So it has a history going back that long and is a legal term of art that is several hundred years old.
Well, thanks. Attorney Courtney Joe. That's my only question. I think we've talked about this. Quite a bit.
Yes.
And I've already asked previous questions. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? Okay, I would all, I guess, speak on it. We have discussed this issue for some time. It even informationally was brought to us some months ago in a public meeting. And I'm glad that we are to the place where it could potentially be 30 days from now where it would be in our all our language. So I look forward to it. Anyone else? Okay, can we get a motion from the commission on ordinance 3005?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 3005.
We have a motion by Newt and a second by Maybe. Roll call, please.
Chair Hugland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Freeman. Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner News.
For. Motion passes. Did we lose Mel?
I think we did. We'll see if we can get him back online.
Okay, because he was right near me in the boxes and now he's not. So I I don't know if he's somewhere else. Okay, thank you. And next, public hearing tonight is resolution number 4948, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to annex certain land which is contiguous to the city of Livingston and includes the property between North O Street and the river to include KPRK and RP. Let me say that again. KPRK radio station. Mr. Cardes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is another one in a series of annexations that we are accomplishing to close certain holes in the city. That description is probably fairly hard to understand, so I will share my screen quickly to, I think, give you the best indication of the area we're talking about. So all the areas in the brightly colored are zoned in the city, and it's this kind of pie-shaped wedge area that we're talking about this evening. So it's the area along Park Street, what would be the extension of Calendar Street and a short extension of Lewis in this area. This particular area, I'm going to switch to a different map. If you can see that. If I can get to that section, one just a second. Can you guys see this particular map with the blue and green lines? Okay, great. So this is a current map of where utilities are in the city. So along Park Street, obviously, we have both water and sewer. You can see that we have an extension of water down Calendar Street, but then dead ends here close to KPRK. And we have sewer main that comes and serves down Lewis and then cuts across here to match up again with the main trunk. So this entire area of the city is on some partial service city, city services. But in this case, the annexation part that we're annexing under is not hooked to city services, which was what we used when we annexed Green Acres. This is wholly surrounded in the fact that this area of the city is wholly surrounded, or this area of the county is wholly surrounded by the city. I will leave it there for questions. I'll turn over to Matthew. Do you have anything to add on that as far as the annexation goes?
I do not. I think you did a good job covering that.
I can hear. I don't know, Michael, if that's. Faith in the background, but I can, we can hear the chatter. I know we're trying to connect Mel, but so. Michael, would you just clearly, again, can you get back to the map and then we'll open it to the public hearing, just making sure we understand again what you were saying? There was some sound that was distracting me, I know, a little bit. So. As far as the property, this is a triangle that is county currently with the sewer, the green is sewer. Okay, and. And I'll, I have a ton of questions later, but I'm sure that they will be answered throughout. And the blue is the water line that ends at a property, it looks like. Okay. But it's surrounded by the city on both or all sides, state highway on one side, and then the green over across the river is also annexed and city at this time. Is that what you're saying? Okay. All right, any clarifying information for or from the other commissioners before we open the public hearing?
I have a clarifying question.
Go ahead.
And thanks, Drell. I I also had the same sound issue, so I was glad to hear you ask for a repeat. Okay, Michael, did you say that they are connected to city services or that they are not connected to city services? That's the part that I missed.
So if you look on page 51 of the agenda, it gives a list of the addresses and then what services they currently are hooked to as far as the city. So it's a combination, depending on the property you're talking about. I think all of them are connected. You know, all of them except KPRK are connected to water. Some are connected to sewer. Some have garbage, and one has all three, water, sewer, and garbage. So there's a combination of city services, depending on which particular property you're talking about.
Okay, great. And then just to clarify that everything to the east of that park, the Meyer River Trail Park, to just to clarify Drell's comment, I think that's all annexed as well. Yes, that's all in the city that are one rating.
Yeah, this this map gives you the best idea. So yes, the park is in the city, but it's also city all the way out. This is the hospital, so all the way out past the hospital almost to there. And then most, if not all of this area is also city. So there's quite a bit of city that extends beyond this particular area.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. The zoom out. Thank you. That's all that I had, Drell, on that bit for the clarifying information on the map. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we will now open this a public hearing on our resolution 4948. Please be reminded to that we have a time limit of four minutes, and there will be a timer as well. This public hearing is now open on resolution number 4948. Please state your name or put your name in the chat. Raise your hand with the little icon. I see. No one yet in the chat. Oh, I see a hand. One second. Sorry about that. Okay, go ahead, Kristen.
Can you hear me, Drell?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Kristin Galbraith, and I currently live at 514 South 11th. I bought my new property at Two Harris Place just at the end of February and just received my letter in March, to which I responded with a letter protest to the annexation. To me, I get the city and sewer services, but that was part an agreement back in the 60s when the property was owned by the Harrises to put the sewer lines through what is now my property, as well as, I think, three other properties down there. We have two properties on Lewis on the way down to Harris Place that aren't even annexed into the city yet, which includes property to the, I guess, south of Lewis. So I'm surprised those aren't being cherry picked as well. I think this kind of looks like cherry picking when it comes to enriching the city's real estate tax base. Historically, these higher end subdivisions and bigger acreages have been annexed in the low-income areas, including a lot of our mobile home parks who would actually benefit from increased services have been bypassed. So I'm wondering why this area is now being reviewed for annexation. I have the smallest parcel in the proposed annexation area, so my tax increases won't be as much as those of my neighboring properties. However, I figured out that my property taxes will double. And the only thing I'll get out of that is garbage services, which I currently do myself. So because the street maintenance, light maintenance fees are assessed by the lot size, my half acre makes it more taxable, but my neighboring properties have acres of land. That could really penalize them tax-wise. Um, I think it's just vital for any annexation to be in the best interest of the city and the property owners, and it appears from meeting with the neighbors that none of us are seeing any benefits of the proposed annexation. So I just wanted to let you guys know that, and thank you for allowing me to provide my written letter protest and then these public comments.
Thank you, Kristen. I will, let's see, open it to more public comments. We have Chris. Go ahead, Chris.
Oh. Okay, there's no picture, though.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So it appears that that we will gain nothing from this. It feels like just a strong money grab from the city. We understand their position, but as Julie and I, as the property owners on that end, we get nothing out of it. After extensively talking to kitty crony about that waterline history, apparently, they did the city a big favor by putting that waterline in, and it was not even paid for by the city. It was just city water. In the first few decades, because of the generosity of the city for to the cronies on that, they didn't even have to pay a water bill. And there's actually written, I found in the archives from 1946, where the property owner that first owned the property were BNSF and owned quite a bit of the property in the back where the Harris they had ended up selling to Harris back in the 60s, I think, or somewhere in there. They actually reimbursed the cronies for use of the water. So I don't know where the city gets off changing their mind after all these decades. Saying that, oh, now we got new leadership in the city, and so we're going to do things differently, and it completely ignored the history that the Harrises and Tonysens and the cronies did for the city by allowing that sewer and water to go through their properties. And then turn around and decide, oh, well, you know, that's that's in the past. We're not going to do anything about that anymore. That's completely ridiculous, because who's to say in another 30 years that they, whatever agreements we make, that there isn't a reneging by the city on stuff like that, too? It's just frustrating to me to not have a real say and just be strong-armed into doing something that I don't think anybody that's involved in this is in favor of. It's certainly not my opinion from having talked to my neighbors. So for this to happen, regardless of whether we're a donut or not a donut or anything like that, that shit, that has got nothing to do with it. View Vista has been a donut forever, and and nothing's ever happened. I I just don't understand how we're supposed to live as neighbors, get along with one another, and then the city comes by and does something like this, which is going to be exorbitantly expensive for all of us. And and then we're just supposed to have trust and faith that the city is actually doing us a favor, when in fact they aren't at all. One of the reasons we moved out of the city was not to have to deal with nonsense like this. And now to be enveloped back into the city and the shenanigans that occur down there is very frustrating to Julie and I. I don't. I don't support it at all. And and then to get into the other issues where we would lose our, the burning of our open burning permit down there. We have a lot of trees. That's going to cost us a fortune to deal with. I've grazed livestock down there. That's going to end. And I, what if I, you know, I have no recourse on that. Courtney Llewellyn has talked a little bit as a precursor about the fireworks stand. That's in the city. I mean, that's in the county, but it would, we would have to make some sort of special permit or something on that. And then who's to say that, you know, if I let my family take that over after I'm gone, that then the city manager and the commissioners then decide, oh, well, that's not going to be allowed anymore. And it's just, I don't care what we put in writing. It always seems to be there's no good faith left anymore from government entities caring about the actual people that live on these places. I mean, that was quite evident out of Green Acres. There's plenty of people out there that have moved out already and just frustrated over the whole thing.
Chris, so your time is up?
That's fine.
Oh, all right. Thank you very much.
I was not watching the clock, so thanks.
All right, more public comment?
Hi, this is Steve Woodruff. And I'm bringing in conjunction with Carl Knutshel and Mark Hartwig on behalf a group of property owners, which my primary client is Kristen Galbraith, who already addressed the commission. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to to address the commission this evening. We, through consultation with our clients, have carefully reviewed the documents and the history of this particular piece of property and the proposed annexation. Specifically, we've detected a number of problems in the process, which we feel are fatal to the process or will be if the matter ultimately is litigated, which we hope to avoid through the denial of this annexation petition. First of all, very obvious and very clear, there's there are defects in the notice process. There were supposed to be a 20-day notice. There were letters that were given to some of the property owners, and I hope as other property owners come on, they identify the date on which they did or did not receive written notice. The notices which were published in the newspaper did not satisfy the 20-day notice requirement that's prescribed by statute. So that's an issue that will be brought up if if there is a question about this legally as we go along. Also, the notice, which was published through the newspaper, had an error in it, which was the wrong year, said that we're hearing in 2020, which obviously is not the case. Mr. Hartwig sent an email to Courtney Llewellyn. Hi, Courtney. He, in that identified, I think, a number of points of concern regarding the consideration that was involved in the extension of water and sewer lines through this property. The upshot of that is that money was paid to property owners to establish water and sewer lines. This was not, there was consideration passing in both directions, both in terms of the city paying to establish infrastructure through the property and the ability of property owners to connect to city services as a matter of consideration and payment for the impact on their property, which arose from the installation of of city services. And so all of the, all of us here in Livingston, myself included, who are uphill, we we benefit from the acquire, the acquisition of the water and sewer lines through this property. And yet, the property owners here who worked with the city in good faith, and there was mutual consideration between the parties, they're being penalized now because they've used the services that were provided to them in consideration of a transaction that occurred 50 odd years ago. The, none of the, none of the property owners that I'm aware of, nor has it been pointed out to me, signed a waiver of right to protest annexation. So I think all all property owners who have protested are here in good faith and without any legal limit on their ability to protest. And a majority of the property owners in the area have protested and objected to this annexation. Now, under the statute 77-2-4314, if a majority of property owners object, the annexation must be vacated and denied. And we had asked previously that this be removed from the calendar. It was not. So we're here. We're we're objecting, and we will pursue this matter legally if it cannot be resolved tonight. And finally, I think, just to echo everybody's concerns, the the acreage of these properties would make it incredibly inequitable from a tax and assessment standpoint. So we ask that the annexation petition be denied. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
Dave Amsker, he'd like to speak. Where did?
All right, go ahead, Dave.
Okay, yeah, I own the property. Part of the Harris property. And years ago, they were gonna annex my property into the city. And the city council did not want my property into the city because of the floodplain issues, and they didn't want to be involved in it. So they turned it down. And then since then, they did a floodplain study on the river. And they put more of my property in the floodplain, floodway, so they could take the other side of the river out for the hospital and then people down there. Even though. Even though water runs downhill. I'm not sure how that works, but I'm not a physics person, but anyway, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, David. Any other public comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Lynn Kaufman. We have the property there where our ex coffee is located. And I just want to bring up the fact that nobody signed any waiver when we were hooked up to city water and sewer. And that's my biggest concerns. We never signed a waiver to, of protest. And also on your, your notes, you've got us down as receiving. Or anyway, having garbage, we don't have city garbage. We pay for our own garbage. But I just want to let, just say my piece too. We're not listed on there's our letter of protest, which we did send one in as commissioners. I don't know why we're not on the list. So anyway, that's all I got to say.
I'm confused. Are you saying you didn't sign a letter of protest or a protest of annexation? Can you help clarify that?
It says Courtney Llewellyn said that everybody signed a waiver of protest to annexation when we were hooked up to city water and sewer. Nobody, any of us down there, none of us signed anything that, that we would waive our right to protest.
Okay, I, I understand. I was confused which protest. All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, Carl Knutshel, I think also Mr. Kaufman mentioned that he had, he and his wife had sent letters of protest in. But they did not appear on, as a protester on the list that was generated through the city council.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And no, I do have to state though, that your time is up. Even if you are representing your, your clients. Any other public comment?
Mark, you're muted.
Here, I go. I'm unmuted. Mark Hartwig for David Amps. I only have two quick comments. One is it appears that the statutory-
You have to state your name and address.
Oh, I apologize. Mark Hartwig, Mark Hartwig, attorney for David Amps. I reside at 118 South H Street in Livingston. Two quick comments. The first is that it appears that the notices were infirm. Given that the first notice was issued, I believe, on April 8th, and they're supposed to be issued at least 20 days before a hearing. And the second thing, and forgive me if I'm repeating something that's been said. I sent to Courtney Llewellyn a copy of Mr. Amp's agreement whereby the city received an easement for sewer across his property in return for which the city granted him access to city water, city sewer and paid, or not him, but his predecessor and paid $500 to his predecessor in interest. And the agreement says that those, the agreement runs with the land. In other words, mutual consideration was, was, was undertaken. And the statute that Ms. Llewellyn is relying on, I don't think applies in Mr. Amp's case. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Give me a few seconds here to make sure everyone has had their time. Okay. It looks like there is no further public comment. We will now close this public hearing. This public hearing on resolution 48, sorry, 4948 is now closed. Commissioners. Time to-
Chair Hoagland is frozen on my screen. Am I the only one?
No. Frozen.
I'm frozen?
Not now.
You were. Can you repeat what you said?
Well, the public hearing is now closed. It is now time for commissioner comments and questions. And who would like to go first?
No, I'll go first.
Go ahead, Warren.
If, I have two questions. First one is other than the technical issue of publication and letter dates, are there any prior agreements with, with previous landowners that would preclude annexation? And the second one has to do with the, the actual based on acreage or lot size of tax basis, which for what's being taxed does not seem to be very equitable. Those are the only two questions I have. Thank you.
Michael, can you answer that or Courtney? Or whoever in the public or in the city staff that can answer those questions?
I'll take a shot at it. If Courtney or Matthew want to correct me, they can, they can jump in. There, there are no agreements with any of the landowners that prevent annexation. The agreement that they're, they're talking about is absolutely true. The city paid $500 to put a water main across that property. There was requirements for the city. They had to extend a water main out to the end of Lewis Street and put a fire hydrant at the end of Lewis Street. That was part of the agreement. I believe it also included two water hookups to the water service. That agreement's absolutely there. That agreement does not address annexation in any way, shape or form. Additionally, because we are not annexing based on services, it's really irrelevant to what we're talking about. The annexation, the portion of the code that we're talking about is wholly surrounded, has absolutely nothing to do with city services. So who does and does not have city services is just provided for reference. It's not part of the legal, part of the legal case for why the city can annex in this case. The city is basing its, its annexation capability on the wholly surrounded portion of the law, not any city services. So while that agreement is in, in, is still in effect, the city has met its requirements. The landowners met their requirements. It's just not relevant to this particular annexation. As far as the equity or equitability of the taxation, the taxation is based the same way it is in the rest of the city. If the commission would like to change how the street assessment is done, they can. We've done it in other subdivisions. New Haven has a separate agreement and code for how they're assessed. But in general, street maintenance and light maintenance is based on square footage, but there are limits to that. Once you hit one acre, any additional property over one acre is only taxed at 40% until you hit five acres. And then at five acres, it's capped at five acres. So you never pay more than five acres. If you're between one and, and five acres, you only pay one acre plus 40% of your additional acreage. So there already are some leeway given to larger property owners in town. Additionally, there's some, some leeway given if it's undeveloped property. I don't think that would apply in anyone's particular case on this one, but there are allowances for that as well. So as far as the property taxes go, that is based on your taxable value, which is determined by the state assessor's office. So the city doesn't determine what your property is worth, nor what portion of that is taxable. That's all done by the state. And then that is the, the premise for how the actual property taxes are assessed. So the method of assessment is consistent across the whole city. And there already are leeway allowances given for larger properties.
Thank you.
Warren, is that sufficient? Do you have any questions to add to what Michael just stated?
Well, the only, only question I would have is say, an average city lot for the street and light maintenance versus, and again, a rough figure, versus the property that's any of the properties that are out there, what that would roughly come to in a year.
I could give you some pretty rough numbers. Um, let me see. And Matthew, double check me on this math. I think if you have like a standard size lot in the city right now, you're probably paying about $250 a year in street maintenance assessment. Say a 7,000 square foot lot. If you have a larger lot, say a 15,000 square foot lot, which is roughly a third of an acre, you're paying $450 a year. So a one acre assessment is probably in the 13, $1,400 range a year. And then as you go above one acre, then it's a percentage of that, right? So two acres would be the 1440 plus 576. So it'd be about 1,900 a year for two acres. And then about, at about $500, $550 an acre after that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Warren. Other? Melissa, go ahead.
Sure, I'll go with that. So, um, what's on? I'm sorry, Chair Hoagland.
I have a lot of questions as well, so it's up to you guys when you want to go, but.
Okay. I'll just go because it kind of goes naturally after what Warren was just asking. So I'm sticking with that same concept of lot size and equity ability. So Michael, is the idea that if, did you say this already? If you can afford a bigger property, you can afford higher taxes? Is that how that reasoning goes?
So the, the decision to base street maintenance and light maintenance office square footage was done back in the 90s. So I can't tell you what their intent was, but as far as options available, that's probably the most progressive option under the assumption that larger property owners can afford more taxes than smaller property owners. And so it's a progressive system, much like income tax, where the more you have, the more you pay as far as street maintenance and light maintenance goes.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm gonna, you know, I think it's important, even though the commission has heard a lot of these questions and knows the answers already. I think it's important we ask anyway, so that the public can get their, excuse me, get their questions answered. So thanks for your patience. I'm going to ask things that we always ask at annexation meetings, just so everybody has the same information. And I, but first I want to start with some of the questions that are legal, because I recognize that some of the comments that were brought up really are not the jurisdiction of commissioners, because we're not attorneys that represent the city and how to interpret code. So I want to make sure that Courtney gets a chance to respond to some of these topics. So and, and you know, Courtney, if you don't, if now is not the time and you need more time, I think that's fair too, because you might not have heard these questions before, but I just wanted to give you a chance to speak on behalf of the city. So the first one was about notice. It sounds like there was some concern about if the notice was adequate and following the law. Did you want to respond to that?
Sure, I would be happy to. Mr. Woodruff is not wrong insofar as when the paper published it. He brought that to my attention yesterday. I confirmed that with the enterprise today. And they were in, they were supposed to publish it on the 5th of March and the 2nd of April. They post, they publish it on the 8th of March and the 16th of April. Notices intended to give all of the people who are affected an opportunity to participate, an opportunity to be heard. And while there certainly was what I would call a ministerial defect, our office sent letters to each one of the property owners. On the 5th of March, the letters went out. I know that they were received at different times from different people. I also had multiple in-person conversations with property owners who live out there. And those started particularly with Mr. Bendon, probably four to six months ago, because he was in the, the part of the identified annexation area for future annexations. So while the notice in the paper was facially deficient, the opportunity for these folks to have due process to participate and be heard has been extraordinary. I don't know of anybody who has not had the opportunity to express their views to the commission. I visited with Leslie Tonison when she came in with her email, so that she could make sure that all of you got extra, or additional copies of that by mail, in addition to the email that she sent you. So the ability of these folks to be afforded due process has not been abridged in, in any way. So I, I feel pretty comfortable about that, even though, even though the paper did not do what it was supposed to.
Okay, thank you. My next, my next question for you is, again, this is really illegal. I think this is, this is clearly a legal interpretation. I, can you tell us about this history of the property and how that plays into the decision? And you know, there's this like letter that people are referencing that we got an email. And then also waivers and like, what does it mean to protest? Because I think those are, I know those are three different things, like the history with the letter. What does it mean like when you waive your right? Because I think it's maybe not, I don't know. I think it can maybe be interpreted more than one way. And so I, I think the code spells it out a specific way and I don't remember off the top of my head. And then the third thing was, what does that mean to have a legally valid protest? Is that too much at once or you got it?
I wrote them down. I will address them one at a time.
Thanks, Courtney.
I'll address the history first because I'm sure that there are things that I don't know. I was very thankful for all of the property owners' input on the history that they had. I got a, an agreement from Ms. Tonison and I got another agreement from Mr. Hartwig from, from Mr. Amps. And their predecessors in interest had agreements with the city for the easement. That was for the sewer main. In the case of the Harrises, who are the predecessors in interest for Mr. Amps and also for Ms. Galbraith, they had agreements to have so many hookups for water and sewer. And certainly it was done in 1960, which is almost 60 years ago. In fact, a little more than that. So in each one of those agreements, they called out what each party was getting for their agreement to the easement. And in no case was there a an agreement not to annex them at some future date. So there's a general rule for property law that says that all agreements about property have to be in writing. And that you look at the four corners of the agreement and the plain language of the agreement. And in no case was there ever any discussion about annexation. These folks have gotten the benefit of the bargain for 61 years and the move to make sure that we can manage development in that, in that area as it is starting to develop, I think is very important. I would, like I said, I, I don't know all the history, but from what I've, I've seen, those are the things that I can gather from that. As far as the waiver goes, the waiver is, is legally required in city code. Everybody who hooks to water or, and or sewer is supposed to sign a waiver of annexation. We understand that in some of these cases, that did not happen. As far as the, the protest goes, where there is a legally valid protest, the property owners have the right to either vote or comment. The property owners have the right to either vote or comment. Um in order to um and if there is a threshold number of them to do that. Uh prevent the annexation. Uh because this is both a contiguous and wholly surrounded parcel. Within the wholly surrounded um statutes, uh there is no right to protest. Because it's assumed um that these folks are already getting a. A lot of benefit from city services and also um. And that's even for folks who are, who are not actually getting utility services. Uh and that's um part of the state law that I provided to the commission um earlier this week. Does that answer your questions, Commissioner Newt?
Yes, thank you. And I don't know what to make of the, it was required in city code and didn't always happen. Um do you have anything you would add to that before I move on with my next? I mean, this is, we're really in the realm of like law now, and I. Would just be curious if you have anything to say, and if you don't, that's fine.
So any deficiencies that were as a result of. Not strictly following city code, really have nothing to do with the annexation, and we're not annexing as a result of their uh being provided utilities.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, and I appreciate you taking all this time. Since this is not our jurisdiction and it is yours to interpret this stuff, so thank you. Um. Okay, let's see. Warren already asked some of my questions. Thanks, Warren. Um. I was going to ask, because this has come up before with other annexations, um who maintains and pays for the lines that are going through these properties? That might be for Michael.
Sure. All of the sewer and water mains are maintained by the city, so we pay for them, we maintain them. Um depending, sometimes in developments, the developer will pay for them as far as installing them. But the city, the city owns and maintains all sewer and water mains.
So this is different than green acres and because green acres had like a fund where they would. They had like their own funds to help maintain the water lines, and this is different.
Yes, when we annex green acres, their water system was private. This is not a private water system. This had, is and always has been. The city's water and sewer system.
Okay. Um and then, thank you. Um. Okay, Michael, I'm going to ask you this. I know the answer, but you get this question a lot. So who is it that's determining the property tax value? Is it you? Is it the city?
So the actual property taxes is determined by the state assessor's office. And they determine the market value from the market value, the taxable value is is calculated, depending on the type of property. Commercial, centrally assessed, residential. Um and then that taxable value goes into the calculations for property taxes. For both the counties, the schools, and the city. So that's determined at the state level. As far as the maintenance districts goes, that is based on the city's budget for those maintenance items for the coming year. And then it's spread out across the property owners based on our assessment method, in this case, square foot. Square footage with the caveats that I I presented earlier.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and then um. So we, uh my memory is that we started talking about annexation. Of this and many other spaces in town before the pandemic. I want to say it was the summer or fall of twenty nineteen at strategic plan meetings. Do you, is there was a question from somebody in the public about how do we decide? Or how does the city decide the order of annexation and why this property, why these properties and not some other properties? Did you, can you explain that? I know this comes up a lot, but I think it's helpful since it's different people here today.
Sure. So all of these annexations are basically, the ones we're working on now are either um places that that have city services. Or are holes in the city, i.e. they're wholly surrounded. Um and the order we're doing them in is based on actually ease of annexation, based on the law. Uh so we're trying to do the simplest cases first and move towards a more complex. Um somebody mentioned the the property. On the south side of Lewis, I think that's a great example um for what. Why we would do this property first and not that property. Um so you can see again, as we said, this. This property is wholly surrounded by the city and then falls under the wholly surrounded portions of the law, which include the um no ability for. For the property owners to protest. You would think that that would also apply here, but actually, if you look, there is a basically unbroken line of county property. All the way out into the county, so they're not wholly surrounded. Uh so that's a, that's a more difficult. Um annexation, it's going to take longer, there'll be more legal issues we'll have to look into. It's not as sim- as simplistic legally. Um and that's why the other ones that we've already accomplished were either city property, which are always easy to annex, because we agree with ourselves that we should annex ourselves. Or again, we're wholly surrounded, such as the Livingston Inn that we just accomplished, or RP Motors, um which again was wholly surrounded. So that's really what plays into um deciding which uh properties annex next. Again, being on city services and being wholly surrounding, wholly surrounded, make it a logical place to go next, which is what played into. Choosing which of those get annexed next. But all those areas and many of the areas they talked about, such as View Vista Trailer Park. Are on the list to be looked at and determined. Um in fact, we've moved towards annexing View Vista. That's when we did the sequential um services agreement with them. On their water system. The intent of that is to improve their water system to a level where the city can then take it over in an annexation. So, so yes, we are moving forward on all of those properties. Um but somebody has to be first, somebody has to be second, somebody has to be third. No matter who that is, they can point at the people who haven't gone yet and say, you know, that's unfair that we haven't done that other property yet. But we have to pick an order and we base it on city services and wholly surrounded.
And View Vista was, I'm trying to remember how many months ago that was. It was a few months ago, wasn't it?
The sequential services agreement? Yeah, I think it was three, three or four months ago.
Yeah, three or four months ago. Um thanks for that. Um. I think it's just really important to, when people come and ask questions, that we make, hold some space for them to get their questions answered. Um at public meetings. So thank you for your patience answering questions that you've probably answered before previous public meetings. I want to speak to something that was brought up, that annexation seemed to be about maybe like the priorities of staff versus the property owners. I don't agree with that statement. I think that the commission really actually considers the community a whole when we talk about annexations. I for one. You know, along with Matthew, who's here tonight, have spent. At least sixty hours at public meetings, listening to the community and their wishes for land use. And in addition to those sixty hours, we've probably spent easily another sixty hours on our own time. Reading public comment and emails and reading documents, which I conveniently have right next to me for tomorrow's meeting. That are about this thick. And this is probably the, I don't know, the, how many times have we read this since October? Twice a month. It's the beginning of October, and it's largely built on, well, not largely, I think it's. At this point, nearly completely built on public comment. And it's all about land use. So I just, I really. Want to impress upon everyone here today that the commission is thinking about the community at large when we're talking about annexation. Because I think it's um. I think it's inaccurate to say that we're not, when we're spending. I'm spending at least ten hours of my time a month, not counting commission meetings, just on land use. In Livingston. Um and annexations are a part of that. These conversations are um and informations in the growth policy. I'm guessing that Matthew probably had to refer to growth policies. Um and Michael had to probably refer to growth policies. Is that true? For these conversations to even move forward with the annexation? I think it's like a legal requirement by Montana code. Is that?
Yep.
And and growth policies are required to be built on public comment. That's by law. Okay, I just want to like straighten that out, that these decisions don't happen um lightly and without. A lot of um considering the community at large. And that's, that was true for green acres. That was not. Um, you know, the green acres was a big topic, that's true, but it's not. I I don't think it was quite accurately represented in public comment tonight. There were a lot of issues with green acres that are different than the issues with these pieces of land, and um none of us took that lightly, I don't think, on the commission. So I just want to be really clear about that. Um. I don't have any other questions, Chair Ogland. I think that's. All of the clarifying questions that I have right now. I do have thoughts. But I don't know if you'd rather I say those thoughts now or hold them till after all of our questions are answered.
That's up to you, Melissa.
I have a show. Wait, then I'll wait.
All right, great. I guess I will go then. Um I had some of the same questions as well that Warren and Melissa asked. Regarding. What we annex and when and why. Um but I do think we need to answer a few more of the whys. Um. What I I'm going to ask, Michael, this question just straight to you. Uh why is this a property or an area of our community that we might want to annex?
So I think there's two answers to that question, or at least two areas of answers to that question. One is generally, why do we annex any property and how does this property uh meet those same criteria? And then I think there's some special attributes to this property that make it uh even more important to annex into the city. So generally, I think there's. The the basic answers are to standardize services within the city's realm, right? This is a, there's a hole in the city where. They have access to water, they have access to sewer, um they could have access to garbage, they will shortly. Um if the annexation is approved, uh because of agreements, they already get services from the Livingston Police Department. They would already get services from the Livingston Fire Department through um automatic aid agreements. I don't think, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think any of these properties, any of the owners of these properties can leave their property without being directly on a city street. And yet, none of them pay street maintenance. Um like, Green Acres, they could actually get around somewhere if they took Old Clyde Park without going on a city street. But not one of these properties can leave their property without running across their neighbor's yard unless it's on a city street. Um and there's some equity issues there for the rest of the city taxpayers. Uh the rest of the city is paying the taxes for these street maintenance that all of these property owners. Use on a daily basis, or at least anytime they leave their property. Uh so I think there's some fairness issues associated with not annexing. This area for the other taxpayers in the city. Um I understand that no one likes to pay taxes. I don't like to pay taxes. Uh but this property, these properties, all of them, um while they pay their fees for water and sewer. They don't pay any of the general fund taxes that pay for Courtney to review legally water and sewer items. They don't pay any of the general fund taxes that help fund the fire department or fund the uh finance office. That does the utility, that oversees the utility bill. So while they do pay fee structures for specific fees. They are not participating um in the overall city services of which they already enjoy, and they already enjoy them because they said. A few of them at least said, they gain nothing by annexation into the city, which means they pretty much already get all of those city services. To me, that's a fairness issue with the rest of the taxpayer, taxpayers in the city. And I think from a general point of view, that's a reason that we annex these. Wholly surrounded areas, because they intrinsically receive all of the benefits of the city, while only paying for portions of the benefits of the city. Um more specifically to this uh particular properties, uh there's a couple of issues that I I think one of them was at least brought up. Uh this area does have floodplain issues, um and it also has some um contamination issues from the BNSF project. Uh both of those are areas that I think the city can provide some oversight uh to make sure that any future development doesn't run afoul of either one of those issues. Because future development is going to come to this area. It's in a great location, it's beautiful. Um I think there's already some, some new construction that's going to go in shortly. Uh I don't expect that to stop. Um whether it's these property owners or future property owners, sooner or later, someone's going to develop in this area. And so the city needs to be able to ensure that it's developed to city standards, um both for floodplain issues, for contamination issues. Um for the sewer and water that already reside in that area. Uh those are, are specific issues to this property that I think also make it a great ti- uh candidate for annexation. So those would be the, the general areas and why I think annexation of this particular, these particular properties is not only warranted. But really is, is a responsibility of the city.
Okay, thank you, Michael. That was a good s- exclamation or explanation of. A lot of what I was going to ask, so um thank you. For example, I was going to ask, what do people gain in general? Um and why is this something that the city should consider annexing? There was some uh statements made about not, no longer being able to do a. A variety of things that are currently being done on the properties, um livestock. And burn, like burn piles and allowances or permitting. Um. Also. There was another one. Uh I can't remember right now, but to, can you answer? On how we burn, had burn piles in the city and what are, um what would be the options?
Certainly. Um I will try to find the other one that you were looking for. Um and I want to preface this by saying that uh most of the trees that are down there are. Uh quite old, um and quite large, and they are cottonwoods. And one of the things that we know about cottonwoods is that cottonwoods that are larger in diameter than about ten inches are often uh hollow. And partly dead in the middle. And uh there was a a burn happening um out there. Several weeks ago, and one of those cottonwood trees caught on fire and the fire ha- department had to go down um and put that fire out. Um so there's probably some things that we can do through uh public works. And the programs that they have with regard to green waste, that will be helpful to the property owners down there. Uh as far as the animals go, uh livestock is allowed on city property with a permit from the sanitarium. That is a two-year permit and it can be renewed. So if they get a permit from the sanit- sanitarium. Um and I don't anticipate that there will be a problem because it's based on um acreage per animal. And so it would, it would be my belief that they would, they would qualify for a permit. Um and probably the renewal of a permit if things remained largely unchanged out there. Let's see if I can find the other one.
Courtney, I think the other one was probably fireworks.
Oh, the fireworks. Uh so the um. City code now says that you cannot sell fireworks in the city. And if the property owner wants to ask the s- the city commission to amend that code. Uh you can do that, and he can maintain a non-conforming use. As long as he passes the fire inspections, which he already has to pass.
And those fire inspections are city, even though it's county? Or is it a county-city agreement on fire ins- inspections for that?
They have been inspections by the state fire marshal. Uh and I believe that our fire chief can do those. Uh when it's, or if it's annexed.
Okay, great. Um. So there is ability, there is the ability to have livestock in the city when permitted through the sanitarian. Um. There's some solutions for burns or. Although it looks like it could be somewhat dangerous no matter what, just because the, a lot of the uh. Undergrowth and dead trees that are already there. Um. Then, so when it came, the statement was made by a couple of the people. On. The majority of the landowners are in protest of this, and we know the difference between a protest and now, I think. I don't know if we need more clarification, but a protest that. Um a indifferent protest of an annexation and um or disagreement. Okay. So when it comes to the land ownership. So when it comes to the land ownership. Is it per? Landowner, so if there are, I think eight, seven. I think seven landowners. Is it? By the majority of their property? Ownership, or is it just by individuals?
It generally depends on which kind of annexation we're doing, but it's often a majority of the property owners. And so. I have visited with the Living Hope Church folks. And we have not heard anything from BNSF. And I don't, I don't know that we got anything from Gap Broadcasting either, which is the old KBRK station. But their ability to protest is absent. Their ability to object and their due process in doing so has been preserved. And they've had a a lot of communication with the city and with the commission.
And so. We had, so that was another part of my question with the. We've talked about the church is potentially moving in. To that area, they, have they purchased that property? Because we didn't hear from them. And they weren't listed, so they did purchase and and the sale was final, so it's actually the property is another entity versus one of the. People listed.
Correct, they purchased from Bendons and there. I communicated directly with the pastor of the church and let him know, because initially. I could not find their property ownership and there's no division. Within the the sections that are on cadastral. But of course, we can all see the sign out there and and I know. Chad Durgen personally, so I just reached out and let him know what was happening, let him know that. We wanted to make sure that if he had any questions. That we could answer those, and my understanding is that he has had preliminary conversations. With building and planning and that they let him know that he was going to have to hook to city water and sewer in that location.
So. So we, we wouldn't have a large church built in that area that didn't. So if we didn't annex and we voted against it. The. New developments such as the church. Would have to put in water and sewer?
Not necessarily. Because they're in the county, there there aren't a lot of regulations, so often that is going to come down to a DEQ permit. But there are a couple of statutory. Regulations that apply, one of them requires that people hook to water and sewer if they're within five hundred feet. The other one requires is for city properties or even external properties where there. Is a water or sewer line within a hundred and fifty feet of the property boundary. And we can ask them to to hook up then. But this is. This is something that we can do because of where the water lines and the sewer lines are for Living Hope. It's not assured that we could do that for any other development that happened in there. As, as the Bendons or anybody else sells property.
Well, and I think that that is a concern. I think as far as within our community. An area close to our river. With no. Requirements as far as city requirements of sewer and water in there, it could be septic, etc., so that. So with development of this area, which could. I mean, if it was my property, I think towards that with the way the market's going, but with development. We could have very little. Oversight as to. The rip, you know. Septic or. Wells, I mean, are, can we have wells in that area, or do we need? I mean, because it was in the plume, so that's another thing, so how would development look as this? Property changes over the next, you know, obvi- obviously, one of the people I think on here are saying they had just built. In this, on this property, so it's a new build on the property, so it is, people are starting to build. So I'm just concerned, I guess, and questioning. How do we move forward if this isn't under? Annexation and under the city, and how would it develop in the middle of our community? Under county. Requirements, etc., and how would that look different? Do you see what I'm asking?
I do, and I'm gonna actually ask Matthew to maybe step in here, and I will, while he's doing that, pull up a map. Of the most recent plume so that you can see how it is or is not at this point effect.
So basically, if it was not required to annex, so if they. Didn't have to come into our water sewer, or they got an exemption from DEQ, which there are a few exemptions from that five hundred foot rule. It would go through the, excuse me, just go through the county's process. And it would go through the counties, if they were going to subdivide, it would go through the county subdivision process. Basically, the city has no control over the decision that the county makes. Or any of their regulations. The city zoning wouldn't apply, so things like lot sizes, uses. Building heights setbacks, none of that would apply to the property until it was annexed, so. Essentially, what you have, if it were to develop in the county, is an area with with no regulatory process other than. There is significant floodplain on the property, and there are floodplain regulations that apply. But if it were to develop in the county, there would be no standards and there would be no requirement for it to to look anything like development neighboring in the city.
So like, there could be multi-story buildings, or there could be dense. Could be dense, it could be one property, it could be a multi-story building without any oversight, like growth policy. You know, planning. Et cetera.
The county growth policy would apply if it went through their process, our growth policy. Would cover that area if it's adopted as it's drafted right now, we would. Be, basically, the county is required to ask us for comments, they're not beholden to those comments. But the county has has no regulatory structure, basically, so no zoning, so. Not only could it look in whatever way, it could be totally different uses, so you could end up with with commercial or industrial. Or residential uses in that area, it's not necessarily. Going to be a residential neighborhood if it were to be developed in the county.
Okay. Let's see, and I have quite a few things, I'm just trying to see if we've gone through most of them. So. I guess my last question for now. Courtney, I think this is yours, just on a timeline. So there were concerns and Melissa already brought this up and. Just on some of the notices and then other people within the meeting have. On notices and timelines, so as far as making a decision. Can you walk us through from start to finish and on the requirements of the. You know, cutoff dates, etc., so that. We can kind of get an overview of that.
Sure, so the the important dates are the date when we first gave the property owners notice. And the date of the hearing. And we set that hearing and then publish it. And it was even in the the meeting where we did the intent to annex, which was on March second. So when we did that March second annexation, that was the point at which we were starting that public notice. So in that intent to annex, there was a public notice that said. We're going to run this in the paper on March fifth and April second, and the public hearing is set for April twentieth, twenty twenty one. Those dates and times were clearly communicated to all of the property owners. And. They have all had an opportunity to ask questions or object. And the, the number of days between that notice, even though it was not in the newspaper. They had about forty-five days notice from the day that we sent the letter out to today's hearing. They had all of the month of March from the, from the fifth to the end of the month, and then they've had all of this month. To today, so they, there has been a lot of. A lot of time, and and this is not a surprise to anybody, so it's about due process, and due process means an opportunity to participate. And be heard, and I don't see that there has been any deficiency in that.
Great, thank you, and last question on that is. By state law. If we were to ask for more time, just to make sure that some of this information on. Or concerns. And we ask for more time to look into some of these concerns or issues so we can have. Strong answers, is there any requirements on? Making decision tonight, or is, and I'm asking sort of a question, I feel I have a bit of an answer to, but I want. Us to understand as a whole, as a community. Like the timeline for the decision. I know there's some requirements, so can you explain that last part?
So when, when there is a hearing. Set, the hearing has to take place on that day. And everybody has had an opportunity to participate in that. Could you? Could you postpone the decision? Perhaps. If there is, is really something that that you think you need in order to make that decision. But the hearing has to, has to be on, on the day that we noticed it. Let me see, let me pull up the other part of the statute.
Well, Courtney's looking for that, I would like to cover a couple of things if I may, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just for, to make sure that everyone's clear on. In the public, some of the things, I want to show you this, this is from the latest briefing from DEQ on the on the plume. That it takes place, so you can see the twenty nineteen boundary. Well, these are the preliminary results, you can see that most of the plume has shrunk to just the very edge. Of the properties we're talking about, really, it's probably in the, in the Park Street right away, I think. In this part, it's all north of Park Street, and then it comes down and touches. Park Street right here, kind of right in the area we're talking about, but in general, the plume for the groundwater has receded. Beyond the boundaries of of the property we're talking about. So that's item one, and then item two, just to make sure that. I want to make sure that the, everyone understood when we were talking about the protests not available, in this case. Holy surrounded land, if annexed, if so resolved by the city or town, whether or not a majority of real property owners of the area to be annexed, object. So even if a majority of property owners object, in the case of wholly surrounded. It's still annexed, there's no. Majority able to veto an annexation when you're doing wholly surrounded, so that's a state law under Part forty-five, which is the annexation of wholly surrounded land, so. The majority of landowners objecting do not have an effect in this case by state law. Is that enough time for recording?
Yeah. Go ahead, Drell.
Go ahead, Courtney, and if you wouldn't mind answering, and then Michael, could you guys get a map of the floodplain? For us, one last map. Go ahead, Courtney.
So yes, you could not make a decision on this tonight. As long as the public hearing was held. That's allowed. And did you want to know what? What the standard is for. The commission as far as looking at the best interests of. The best interest of the city.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
And this is, actually goes back to the intent. Where it is in the best interest of the city or the town and the inhabitants of any contiguous platted tracks or parcels of land or unplatted land. And then that's for the the contiguous land and then the intent for. The wholly surrounded is what we talked about earlier, which is that they already. If not have, use most city services, they have access. To their property through city streets, and that there is an expectation that at some point when they're wholly surrounded, that they will probably be annexed.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. I know I'm asking a lot of questions tonight, you guys, but thanks. Michael, do you have a? Map of the floodplain or the flood map?
So this is the official FEMA floodplain map. I'm trying to make sure I understood it all before I do you, although Matthew probably does this more often than I do, Matthew, you wanna, you wanna explain the key to them, please?
Yeah, so if you, you can see the hashed area, that's sort of blue and red. Which says floodway. Basically, in the floodway, you can't displace any floodwaters, so assume you're probably not going to be doing any building, if it is. Building, it's going to be very minor. The blue area you see to the west, that's the hundred-year floodplain. You are allowed to build in the hundred-year floodplain with the correct permits, basically, you're going to have to lift. Buildings two feet above base flood elevation, the most obvious thing you see that is something like a house on stilts. But there are other ways to do it as well, you won't see that as much in Montana, and then the. Orangey area is what we'll call the five hundred-year floodplain, that is non-regulatory, so there's no regulations attached to that, so. Basically, a standard lot building process, and I can try to answer any questions you may have on that. But that's a basic overview of of the floodplain there.
Great, thank you, and then that line at the bottom, I, it's pretty little, so I'm trying to, here I'll try, so the. The property is that triangle we still see with the words across the bottom. Right? Potential chant, where's the, where's the property boundary then, or the annexation property boundary? Right there? Okay. So. Most of it is not, well, some of it's in the hundred year and some of it's in the five hundred year, about half and half, with some. That is. In the. Flood area. Correct. Okay, alright, thank you. I'm done for now, you guys, thank you. I know it was a lot. Other commissioners, questions, comments?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm go, I'm going back in my notes and. This is in regards to the fact that there's an existing business. On this property, the fireworks stand. I was hoping. And I didn't follow up on this, in good faith to change your ordinance. On the fireworks stands, to allow them in the city, and my apologies for not following up on that to see if. A, if that's feasible and doable, and. a, if that's feasible and doable. And uh, um, how long would it take to go through the process of changing the ordinance? Mr. Carr, do this, I guess? Or Courtney?
Uh, as far as the process goes, it's our standard ordinance. So first reading, second reading, thirty days later, we take effect. Um, and that would be, that would be the full process. And really, it's only to strike selling from one paragraph of the code. So it's, it's really just removing one word from the code uh would allow fireworks sales inside the city. I would recommend that if we do that, we then um add it to our zoning table list of uses. Uh, and then you have some choices at that point, whether you want to allow it in certain zones or allow it in no zones, in which case it would be a non-conforming grandfathered use um until it was uh, you know, sold or went away. And then, and then it couldn't be re- re- put back up in the same spot if we did it that way. But there's a lot of options um once uh the ordinance has changed. But if this were just a zoning issue, it wouldn't be a problem because it would be grandfathered in. But because the ordinance specifically says you cannot sell in the city, um, that can't be grandfathered because it's just violation of the ordinance.
Right, and I was looking something, you know, um, you know, a little stronger, um, you know, you know, listening to Chris, you know, I, you know, um, I can understand where he's come from, you know. Okay, time for me to pass on to my successors. Uh, oh, no, you can't do that. That's why I was looking forward to something with a little more teeth in it, like changing the ordinance. To give them that um assurance. Um, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I felt pretty strongly about that um making that change to the firework um de-ordinance. Um, and far as having zones and stuff like that and being able to customize that ordinance, that, that'd be great. Um, I could, I could see us uh working with that, but um that's, that's one thing I find fundamental that I'd like to see enacted. And uh, I don't know how to do it before the annexation vote or not. So um, open for ideas there. Other than that, um, everything that uh the rest of the commissioners have brought up and expressed, um, I agree with, I understand. This is hard, you know, there's nothing easy about it. And uh, um, I can feel people's frustration and stuff like that, but there again, um, I can see the cities um stand uh side of things as well. But thank you, Madam Chair, um, I'll yield.
If I could add one thing, Commissioner Schwartz?
Please do.
Uh, well, at this point, the property owners are objecting. Um, and we have not uh therefore negotiated anything with Mr. Ben. And I do have that ordinance ready to make that change. Um, and we could do it as soon as the next meeting. Also, uh, if we did that even within the next couple of meetings, because of the window in which um fireworks are to be sold in the state, we would be well within the window and we wouldn't uh affect Mr. Ben's business.
Very well, thank you. Um, I didn't realize you were that far along with it, so alls you gotta do is ask, huh? Yeah, um, yeah, cuz my vote, my vote's gonna be kind of contentious upon that. I don't, I, I wanna assure the business owner that he will be able to continue his business without any um encumbrances, I guess.
Well, and the other thing is that it doesn't apply to him until he is annexed.
Right, true.
Yeah, if we annex and then we change it immediately, th- there's practically no effect.
Okay, I just uh, putting that out there for the commissioners, um, because I'm, I'm pretty uh adamant at this point, I really want to see that change. So, thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Um, any other commissioners?
Melissa? I forgot to ask one thing, and that is um about septic tanks. Are there any septic tanks on these properties?
There's none that I know of, but I'm, I'm unsure. Matthew, do you know? Courtney, do you have any idea?
Uh, we know that there are at least two for the properties that are not receiving sewer services. Um, there are several rentals on the Benin property off of uh Calendar. And then the fifteen-hundred East Park Street uh does not receive sewer service.
So there's a few. And some might be operable and some might be just in place, sitting there. Um, that was my last, that was a question I forgot to ask Chair Hoagland, but I would move that we recess before we talk more, just because we're past seven o'clock hour, if you're open to it.
Yeah, we're close. I think, I think most everyone has spoken, but if we could take our break, we are definitely over our hour and a half. And we'll take our five minutes. Is that all we need today?
Yeah, very good.
All right. Um, thank you, community for, and public for uh letting us take a quick break. We'll be back in a few. All right, we're back. Are all our commissioners back yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Um, so we're down to final questions and, um, and then comments on this resolution forty-nine, forty-eight and the annexation of this uh area of our community. Any comments that anyone else would like to make commission-wise? Go ahead, Melissa.
I just wanted to share one concern I have and then some feedback that I've gotten from the many, many hours of public meetings I've been at over the last several months. Um, what's on my mind is ag use. Um, that was identified not only tonight, but over the course of our public meetings. That protecting agricultural use for land is a priority for people in our community. I'm a little bit more concerned about what's happening at the state legislature right now and how that might impact our ability to um to protect the land for, for this kind of use. And I don't know what all the implications are going to be of some of the policies that are moving forward, but I guess something that's being targeted. Um, so I guess I just want to flag that, especially for Matthew, because I know that came up um in our growth policy meeting as well. I'm not sure, I'm, I don't know if you're tracking that or you'll just get the update or along with the rest of the planners across the state when the code or if the code changes, but um, you probably know the bills I'm referring to. Um, I don't know if it's going to impact us um for some of these spaces that are adjacent to the city. Um, I just don't know. I don't know if any of us do, but I think the threat's really there. And we should be paying attention to that because there is some attempts to really restrict our ability to create policy and pass policy that reflects our local community. Um, now I'm Chair Hoagland, I know you've identified that before as well. This legislative session, so um, thought I'd flag that one too. Um, some of the feedback that I've gotten, that's really weighing heavily on my mind tonight as I listen to these folks and I balance those thoughts with um, I mean, how many comments have we gotten on the growth policy? Hundreds? Maybe we're into the low thousands now. It, it might be it's up there. I think we were already hitting records before the public meetings started with the amount of feedback we're getting for a town our size. I'm gonna identify some things that have been brought up numerous times for the rest of the commission. Because it's really weighing on me. Contiguous growth. That's a very high priority for people that live here. They don't want to see hopscotch development. They want to see the city boundaries. Um, if they expand being next to where the city already is, as opposed to like leapfrogging. Infill development is extraordinarily strongly preferred by people that live in Livingston. We all know this as a commission because we hear it over and over, not just at the growth policy meeting, that um people that live here want developers and property owners to pay their own way. You know, they want properties to pay for themselves rather than offset by a different part of the tax base. That came up at our impact fee conversations. Um, one of the highest priorities that keeps rising to the top of every list is protecting the river. Um, thinking about how, how the city is growing by the river or what kind of uses are allowed by the river. Um, you brought that up, Chair Hoagland, and that's something that we've heard repeatedly at our growth policy meetings and in public comment. Um, so those are the things that are on my mind as I'm thinking about. Um, this is the first time I've heard anybody say that they want that they want discontinuous growth. If that makes sense, this is the first time I've heard it was um tonight. Uh, we've probably hundreds of comments saying the opposite, so I'm really thinking about our community at large and um what I've been hearing over the last several months. And how does this fit with that larger? How does this fit with our broader community and the needs and wants of the community at large? And I think that's all I have to say right now. Thank you, I yield.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Any other commissioners want to make comment?
Uh, Chair Hoagland?
Go ahead, Warren.
I think that um the uh, the point that Quentin brought up about the uh, the ability of the uh, the business to continue. I think that uh, that should happen. I, I would uh strongly agree with uh, with that. The other fact is uh, another fact is uh, just coincidentally, in today's enterprise, there's a letter regarding zoning in the county. And it emphasizes the um the gap in terms of uh what the city can uh can regulate legitimately and uh, which is not happening in the county. And in this case, we've got a um, a small or not so small enclave that um uh is in the county and would not be subject to uh our impact, impact fees or any, any of the other um items that um that make a property of, what would you call it, amenable to the uh to the city and what the city residents uh want to have the city, the direction they want to have the city to go. So other than, other than uh the uh definite continuation of the uh, the business ability to, to continue uh and with the MCA, uh with the continu- uh contiguous uh property regulation, uh I think that uh annexation should happen. Thank you.
So, thank you, Warren. Um, Mel or Quentin?
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna, Warren took it away from me again, as usual, but I was just gonna go back to the the county zoning or lack thereof that um, that really disturbs me and bothers me. Um, and uh, it's something that really, really needs to be thought about. And uh, it's not gonna get any easier for the county either. Um, their, that loggerheads all, all the time with trying to implement any kind of zoning at all. So thank you. I just wanted to back that up. Thank you, Mel. I mean, uh, thank you, Mr. Maybe.
Anything else, Quentin? Anything else, Quentin? All right, Mel, anything?
No, I, Warren just made, I've been listening to the whole thing and I just agree with the, I agree with the way the commissioners are looking at this. But I think sometime in the future we, we have a lot of pockets like this and I think we're in the right direction when we try to move the way we are for future control and I think this makes more sense. I think we're all on the right track. I yield.
All right. Thank you. Um, I think as far as, I'm gonna just make a one statement in general is when I make decisions as commissioner, I try to think big picture, community and like the big picture look because that's really what we should do, in my opinion, is look at what's best for the bigger good instead of my backyard. Because I would like to do all kinds of things for my backyard and I feel like this is a bit of that, just on the edge of, okay, do we look at this as just an individual or a a part of our community or a small part? Or do we look at the big picture? And um in this case of this area, they are already, they're definitely a part of the city. They access city streets. Some as stated, some of the property owners own like cap city and county right next to each other. And um and so it's about in the big picture, like when we think about the downtown, are we improving the downtown for one business? Or the sidewalks or the streets for a business? Or are we thinking about what's best for our community and our businesses in general? Downtown and the people who frequent the businesses. So again, I try to always look at that, what is what's big picture? And um and it leads me also to then the opposite of or the concerns that this is a definite like bubble in the middle of our community that could develop pretty quickly and not having any regulations could really hurt or any, you know, growth policy recommendations, regulations, ordinances could really hurt kind of a key point or key part of our community right next to the river and that concerns me. So yeah, I think this is a tough one because I do respect people and what they want for their, their home or their properties. But then looking at both sides of this issue too, it's been about half and half. That's why I asked that question of, is it about property acreage? Is it about just rights of each individual? So we have about half and half that have been against it and half that are okay with it.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
So it kind of leaves us at, leaves us at you know, really kind of a middle place of making this decision. There's definitely pros and cons and fours and againsts, but yes, we're at that, make a decision.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Mel.
Uh, there was a remark made about green acres and we were after green acres for a long, long, long time and I see that as an entirely different issue. I mean, there we have septic tanks and the river not too far away. But we were working on it for a long, long time and I think with that decision we made and we're, I think we worked fairly with everybody. And it was something that just had to get done at some point anyway, that everybody's much better off, so that's the way I looked at green acres. And I think what we're trying to do now is is keep control for the future and decide what we want to do. So I think these are all important subjects. They're kind of tough, but I think we're, the comments are very good tonight. I yield.
Okay, thank you, Mel. Okay, any last comments or statements from the city or commission, I should say?
Madam Chair, I just just want to go back to the business issue of the fireworks stand. How can we assure the bendin' said? Well, I really want to change this ordinance and I want to perhaps we'll take it on faith that I'll make sure and follow through that we do change this ordinance, that they will be allowed to sell fireworks if we annex them. And I guess for lack of anything else, I give you my word. Thank you. I yield.
Can I make a remark to that, Chair Hoagland?
Sure, I was going to as well. So go ahead, Melissa. I'm sure it's on the same page.
I was just gonna invite Quentin to maybe make a motion in the commissioner comments to put something on the agenda.
Very well, thanks.
That's what I was thinking.
Thanks.
When I think I agree, I was going to say there, we can easily move things onto agendas quickly. Another just point to make on what Quentin is saying, and I guess Courtney, this might be a question. You know, is this the cart before the horse or the horse before the cart? So when dealing with the, with a very important issue, which we have discussed previously, and it does matter that a business can continue and function if this annexation did go through. And we've talked before for quite a while on that, so I mean, I get the concern of it taking or having a, being a problem, so how do we make sure this happens or should it happen first before the annexation?
Because of the window when fireworks can be sold, if we get this on even one of the next two or even probably three agendas. And I would, like I told Quentin earlier, I've got the the changes ready to go. We can do two readings and it's effective thirty days after, and that's well in advance of the window in which fireworks can start to be sold. So it shouldn't affect Mr. Bendon at all.
Okay. All right, um. Anything else, Quentin, Melissa? Or you move forward? Okay, I think we're ready for a motion on resolution forty-nine, forty-eight. Do I have a resolution? And I mean, do I have a motion on resolution forty-nine, forty-eight?
I move we accept resolution forty-nine, forty-eight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by maybe and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or
Commissioner Freeman?
For
Commissioner Mayby?
Or
Commissioner News?
Or
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for your time and patience through that. Um, we're moving on to our next, or to our ordinances and our first ordinance is ordinance number three thousand six. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, requiring, requiring all buildings to comply with the building codes and amending ordinance number twenty-eighty-five as codified by chapter six of the Livingston Municipal Code by adopting by reference the two thousand eighteen International Energy Conservation Code and deleting section six dash twenty, or sorry, six dash fifty-five of the Livingston Municipal Code. Mr. Carter's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is fairly straightforward ordinance. The state of Montana finally accepted the twenty-eighteen International Energy Conservation Code. And as the state has adopted it, we can now adopt it as the city. So it just updates our building code to accept the new energy code that was accepted by the state. That would be the end of it, except I think Jim likes to make my life difficult, so he also deleted a section in the the ordinance, which actually needed to be done, section six five, six fifty-five, which you referenced on page, it's on page sixty-eight of the agenda. And what it does is it removes a development, remove Development Review Committee from our city code. The reason that that is being deleted is because in your last meeting, you developed, or you you approved a new site review. Site review process that's now required when there's building inside the city that meets certain requirements, condominiums, certain number of of units and so forth. So basically that new process has replaced this Development Review Committee in its entirety. And the new process is better, it's more, more complete, it's it's more granular as far as what we look at and and as far as developers knowing what they need to do. So really, this is just cleaning up the code to get rid of a section that we no longer need because you've already replaced it with a better section.
All right, thank you, and this is the first review, this first and only, wait, I have to think about our
First, first reading and it'll come back before you again for the second reading.
Thank you. I have my notes here, but this is the first reading, so this would be an intent. All right, so any public comment on ordinance number three thousand six? Any comments? I don't see anyone. Those are popping up on my screen, my screen, and I apologize, I just lost everyone. Okay. Any, all right, we'll move it to commissioner comments. Any commissioner common, comments on our ordinance three thousand six?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That was a good fake out. Melissa. Yeah, this, I've been waiting for, this is the update that I was excited for. Um, I'm glad to see it is being implemented as soon as it can be implemented and I appreciate getting the confusing code out. I also like the new guidelines that we passed better. So I think this is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, and agreed. I feel like this is just a continuation of some of the work that has been done in the past year in particular. And um we will see this again, so I think I will stop there. Anyone else? Okay, do we, are we ready for a motion?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Make a motion, we pass ordinance thirty-nine oh six.
Thirty.
Thirty oh six, I'm sorry.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by maybe. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or
Commissioner Freeman?
Or
Commissioner Mayby? Commissioner News?
Or Motion passes. Okay, next, we have one resolution tonight and it is resolution forty-nine fifty-eight. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign a sub-recipient agreement for community development block grant revolving loan fund with the Park County MSU Extension Office. Mr. Carter's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is just a renewal of the contract that we have with Park Local Development for managing our revolving loan fund. So that was the one that was managed by Prospera and then Park Local Development has taken it over. Um, that has brought that money out of Bozeman Banks and back into local Livingston Banks and has allowed business owners who want to apply for it to have an office in Livingston to apply for it instead of having to go to Bozeman. So that has been a great addition, just a really good improvement, I think, for the community and the business owners to be able to do that locally. Additionally, they were incredibly flexible at the beginning of the pandemic when we said, hey, we need to figure out a way to get money out to business owners that need it, so they created an entirely new program based off of the needs of pandemic. They were able to help several business owners during that time to continue with payroll, to continue to do some things they needed to to get through the especially the early, early days of pandemic when a lot of the services were completely closed. So that investment in the partnership with Park Local Development, I think, has really paid off over the last couple of years. And I strongly encourage you to continue that partnership moving forward and let me sign this contract.
All right, thank you, and thank you. I spilled my water and I had to leave to get a towel very quick, but I, it was very close, so I was listening. All right, let's open it to public comment. Any public comment on resolution forty-nine, forty-eight?
Hello, this is Katie Weaver, four one four West Front Street. I am representing Park Local Development Corporation tonight and just wanted to be here to let you know I'm happy to answer any questions you might have and just again, thank you for working with us in the last couple of years and giving us the opportunity to show how we can take those funds and utilize them at a, at a higher rate than they were and when they were previously located over in Bozeman. So we had a little bit of a blip on the radar over the last year or so, but um, are continuing to find creative ways to support our business community. So I just want to thank you for the support and I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Katie. Just, we really appreciate the Extension Office and you and and your work that you have done with helping our community and our businesses. Appreciate you. Any other commissioner questions of Katie or comments?
I'll make a comment.
Go ahead, Melissa.
I, when I, I went a long time ago before we were in a pandemic, I went to one of these meetings with the Park Local Development Group and I was really impressed with just how well they know our community and I think it was a really wise move to keep local people, helping local people. Because they were really eager and sort of chomping at the bit to figure out ways to support our business community and I just, I have nothing bad to say about it and only good things. I thought it's an impressive group of people and I think it's an important thing to support.
Thank you, Melissa. Other comments, questions? Um, I, I'll make one more comment. I remember when we started looking at changing over how this would all work out, you know, who would do what? And it was a process of, and it was hard. It was a hard a hard thing, I think, to trust that what we were doing could get better. And I think you've made it better and we really appreciate it. And I, I recall just the switch over being a little bit slow and steady because I think people were leery and and not of the potential for the work you guys are doing, but to let go of that other work that the other entities were doing for us. So I think the changeover has been phenomenal and we appreciate, like I said, the work that is being done and look forward to more of it. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion then? Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, we pass resolution forty-nine fifty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by courts. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
For
Commissioner Freeman?
For
Commissioner Mayby?
Or
Commissioner News?
Or
Motion passes. Our, tonight we have three action items. Our first action item is is to discuss approved deny proposal from MSU Extension to add an economic development agent to respond to the community business needs created by COVID nineteen. Mr. Cardus, would you like to start by introducing that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm going to introduce this from the city's perspective and then I can turn it over to Mary Ann to talk a little bit about her perspective. Uh, a couple of, uh, first, I'll make a confession. I, I put these items back to back because I think it's just a great example of how much the Extension Office. Uh, you know, Katie is economic development and Mary Ann through the Extension Office, how involved they are with the community and the variety of needs that they meet. Uh, they're just one of the a great organization in the city and the county that are focused on the people. And so I think seeing these back to back really emphasizes that. Additionally, this will be the first time we talked about the American Recovery Plan and some of the funding available to that. Um, we still don't have the full uh, details associated with that, but I think it is appropriate in this case to talk about using that funding for this type of position. We are still estimating that we should get somewhere in the realm of one point eight million dollars in American Recovery Plan money. And one of the things they talk about is using that money to directly aid people who have been affected by the pandemic. The proposal in front of you is basically to get another Katie, although I'm sure we can never find anybody like Katie again to, to meet her level of, of just professionalism and, and in this process. But I think one of the things the pandemic has really shown is that there's a lot more work out there to do and one person can't do it. And there's going to be a lot more to do through this recovery phase. Pandemics, emergencies are hard. Recovery phases are harder and longer. Uh, you never, if it's a, if it's a year-long pandemic, the recovery is not going to be one year. The recovery is going to be two, three years, maybe more. But I think this is a great opportunity to use some American Recovery Plan money to get another economic development agent to go out to the business owners that need the aid and provide that directly to them to increase their their capacity to help local business owners and um, really help them recover after the pandemic. So I'll let Mary Ann talk to most of it, but really the ask tonight is one, two or three years of funding. And I would be completely supportive of the three years of funding out of that one point eight eight million to set aside a hundred and twenty thousand for three years of having that capacity to help business owners through that recovery process, I think is invaluable. And it's not a very big investment. I, for the return that we'd be able to get on it. It's a great presentation.
Michael, would
Yes.
Michael, would you just eat that? You cut out and I don't know if I'm the only one, but you were saying like the one, two, three year plan and, and could you just say that part again?
Sure. So before you tonight are three options, uh, well, four, if you include not funding them, but um, there's requests for one, two year and three years worth of funding. And really a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for three years of capacity to help recovery in the community. I think is, is not much money and a great investment out of that one point eight million that we see coming our way for, for exactly these kind of programs. I think this kind of program lines up perfectly with the intent of them, of the money that we would receive and is we're using people we already have, the Extension Office and Katie's expertise to bring someone new in to increase those capacities and help local business owners. I think it's a great opportunity and really fits our intent as a city to be more of a I want to say, really, we're just providing the support to agencies that are experts in this field. The city doesn't have economic development. So we can use the funding to give it to those experts that can get out there and, and really help the community. So with that, I will turn it over to Mary Ann and see if she has some wisdom and exciting news for us.
Thank you, Mike. Chairman Hogan, uh, request the permission to address the commission.
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
As you see in our proposal, uh, we're when the pandemic struck, um, and Katie was able to work with Park Local Development to um, create the emergency loan fund to be responsive to our community. A menagerie of needs came out of that process, um, from the businesses that applied for loans, from the businesses that she visited with, from the businesses that visited with the general office. And so through that process, um, we were able to develop the emergency loans, but we were also able to collect all that information and discover what kind of education our community really was needing. And she's been able to mobilize some of those educational pieces with a Business Builder Series currently ongoing. But the need just far outstrips what we have for capacity. And so that's when we were looking at uh, the American Recovery Plan funding and what it was identified to serve. It match, uh, matches almost perfectly um, with the need in our community and the, the capability of MSU Extension to provide that need. Uh, if you scroll down to the budget, you'll notice that we're partnering um, City of Livingston with Park County and MSU Extension to provide the person or this position. Um, and so it is a, it's a direct partnership for both entities that are within the county. And I think the, the proof is in the pudding, if you will, as cliche as that is, with Katie's position and how successful it's been that the partnership between the city and the county and extension is able to produce great things. So with that, I'll open up the, um, I'll yield the submission.
Thank you, Mary Ann, for the uh, detail that helps. Any questions uh, of Katie and Mary Ann from the commission?
Sure. Okay. So this position, it sounds like would be working really closely with Katie and probably, I'm imagining under her leadership since she's already identified the priorities. Is that? Am I understanding correctly?
You are. Um, Katie, are you on as well?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, this position um, would be a peer position to Katie's. The way MSU Extension works is to identify those community needs and work to provide education and resources to address those needs. Um, and that's the scope within which we bring on individuals. And so of course, this person would come on recognizing that Katie is a resource in the community and together um, they would both work to address those needs that were discovered and provide those educational resources and programming to the, the businesses that need it.
Thanks.
The other um, need that was identified, and this came out of Steve Caldwell, uh, was just more outreach. And while Katie has done an incredible amount of outreach, what that actually translates into is someone on a regular basis going door to door to talk to business owners because of the barrage of information that's coming at them right now. And one person is not able to cover even the City of Livingston, let alone Park County, and that's also a need for increased capacity. Someone to make sure that they are carrying that information in person to our community because that's where we're at right now. Katie, a comment?
Um, Melissa, is, you still have the floor. Do you have any more questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Any other commissioner questions for Katie and Mary Ann? Okay, we'll open it to public.
Never mind.
Okay. You can go when you need. Um, so we'll open it to public comment. Is there any public comment on action item A? Go ahead, Vic.
Um, this is Vicky Petrie. I am owner of Mountain Air. Um, I'm currently homeless, so you can put P O box seven oh four or just use my business address, seven eleven West Park Street. But I'd like to say a few words as a small business owner on behalf of this and in support of this proposal. And I don't know if anybody, if everybody's had an opportunity to read through it, but um, the MSU Extension Office has been instrumental in my small business journey. Um, from before I, when I was first considering buying a business and through my purchase and even more so now and during the pandemic shutdown. You know, we, all of our small businesses in town and in Park County were affected and in a variety of ways, and they've been able to be a, a mentor to consult with me to provide resource, there are stores for resources, training opportunities, um, identifying grant opportunities and just supporting um, what we as business owners are doing. And we can't, you know, we're all operating on super small budgets. And even smaller after having a year that we had. I just think that the services that they are providing is invaluable. You know, our small businesses are the foundation of our economy here in Livingston and Park County. And um, it's imperative that we continue to be successful and thrive. And what they offer, the resource and the, just that extra, whatever I, whatever it is, is, is incredibly important. Um, and by supporting this position, you're supporting all of us and our community. Um, dedicating funding in support of this is um, a judicious use of that funding and the American Rescue Plan. So that's my story.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. I see Kristin's up.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, thanks, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name's Kristen Galbraith at five fourteen South Eleventh. Um, obviously at the meeting for a few other agenda items, but I did want to offer comments on the Extension Agent um, Position Proposal. I do have the pleasure of working with Katie on several community projects and boards that deal with economic development. So I was thinking that dedicating ARP funding to support this position that will in turn provide support to small businesses in our area is really strategic use of the ARP funds. As we all know, the recovery for our small businesses and probably most businesses is going to take several years. So I think this is an effective way to support those businesses in our community as a direct response to the pandemic. And I think, and actually know from my county work that this is one of the priorities of the ARP funding. Um, I think it's important to realize that the businesses are the foundation of Livingston's economy. So I think in supporting this position, you will support the entire community. Um, I just think it's a wise investment of the funds to assist with the future and I thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Kristen. Any other public comment? I don't see any. Please speak up if you want at this time. Okay. I don't hear anyone else or hear of anyone else. So uh, close it to public and commissioners. Any questions or comments?
Sure, I'll go.
Hey, go ahead.
I just, you know, thanks, Vicky, for that really powerful testimony. Um, that's really personal and thank you for sharing it. It's, we hear stories often as commissioners and it's really helpful to hear them firsthand. Um, so what you're saying is consistent with everything I've ever heard about Katie's work and um, I just really appreciate you taking time and sticking around this long meeting to share that bit with us. And um, I agree with, you know, Vicky and Kristen. I think this, uh, they already said it, so I don't need to repeat it. It's a great way to support our community. And I think this is what the people of Livingston have been asking for is more direct support of where they're hurting right now. And it will take a long time. The pandemic was not our fault and we can help with the recovery. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Melissa.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I this is definitely a bargain that we're getting um, compared to what we were paying in the past to um, I'm not gonna knock Prospera because they do a wonderful job. I think they're awesome. Can't remember if it was Rocky Mom Development Corporation or whoever we were paying money to and uh, like the only time we saw him was budget time when they needed money. Um, yeah, the work of Katie and Mary Ann and those guys have been doing outstanding and um, the people in the community, the businesses, the community that I've talked to, just sing their praises and uh, it's nice to keep everything right here local in. These people care about Livingston Park County and it, and it stays here. They're not spread it, spread out over three or four counties. So keep up the good work. I can't, can't thank you guys enough for what you do. Madam Chair.
Quentin, go ahead, Mel.
Um, I started about ten years ago on commission work and I think Katie started about the same time in what she was doing and she's one of the best kept secrets in the area. Done great job and she looks super, I haven't seen her in a while, but very few people understand the work that, that she does, but she's she's been doing it and she's, it gets better. So a tremendous asset to uh, our community. So good to see you, Katie. Thanks for your work.
Thank you, Mel. Um, Warren, or you want to go or would you like me to?
No, I just have one quick ques- question for Katie. Uh, is, uh, when is the leadership program going to start or is that way up in the air still?
Um, the planning team for next year will have their first meeting tomorrow night. And we'll know, we'll open applications probably in the next um, two to three weeks.
Super. Thank you.
Yeah.
Coming soon.
All right, um, I just have a statement to make on um, I, the importance of the work that this uh, approving this um, action item um, would have. And that is that I think one of the weaknesses across the world is we don't mentor enough. And so with businesses, we assume that businesses should just go into a community, have success, and then if they fail, they don't, they don't. But I think part of having these supports that we this action item as well as Katie's work and the Extension Office and um, the, the county working with the city, all the work on that and the support that we give to that these two positions really are the multiple positions that um, you guys take really your uh, roles you take in helping businesses is what we often miss um, throughout our communities. And I think you're mentoring, you're helping build, you're helping people to be successful and not just leaving them out there alone. And I think it, it's a good reflection of what we do well in our community, which is whether people like this quote or not, but it does take a village. And this is an example of that. So I love the idea. And uh, look forward to voting on it. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, can I just address a couple of administrative things before you guys make a motion?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so I probably didn't word this very well in the agenda, so I, I apologize. But the intent is that if you approve this, that you're approving, you're giving me the authority to sign the contract with them. So we wouldn't have to bring the contract in front of you again. Um, basically it would be up to the hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, depending on what you vote on. And able to do it. The other item, obviously this money isn't here yet. Uh, but I think the city for, especially for this kind of program, depending on when uh, the Extension Office would like to start, uh, we could float the money for this program until the ARP money comes in and then backfill it. So um, as far as the start, the start point comes, we can support it out of the general fund until the ARP money comes in. Just basically we would spend this is accounting, you probably don't care, but we would create an ARP fund and we would spend it negative floating cash out of other funds. And then when that money came into that fund, it would already be spent. Um, sorry, sorry for the random accounting stuff in there, but that's, that's how we would support it. So you can be assured that no matter when they want to start, if the ARP money's there or not, we would support this as a state.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Um, any questions or comments on that, commissioners? All right. I think we're ready for a motion. Do we have a motion from the commission on action item A?
I make a motion. I beat you, Mel. Okay.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Herr Holmberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
Or.
Commissioner News.
Or. Motion passes. Our second action item tonight is discuss approved deny P E R funding for the Yellowstone River Pedestrian Bridge. And I know we did add in the letter into the agenda. Michael, was that posted with the agenda for the public as well?
I don't know if it was added, I don't know if it was added to the website, but we'll make sure it gets out there so people can see it.
Okay.
But I know we emailed it out to all the commissioners.
And we'll have some reference to it, I'm sure, in the meeting. Because I think we had missed the letter of support and feedback from the Parks and Trails in the agenda. So there it is. Thank you. But I think all the commissioners have it, but also the public will have it posted. So let, would you start, Michael, by presenting the concept for us?
Sure, so. Go ahead, okay, so the, the request came through the county and we tried kind of a new process on this one, which I actually really like. Because this was a Parks and Trails issue, we referred the county to the Parks and Trails Committee to present to them. And then they could present their recommendation to you. So the letter that you received is actually the recommendation from the Parks and Trails Committee on the county's proposal. In this case, this particular case, it's a proposal on a pedestrian bridge near Mayor's Landing. And in this case, it is the, the P E R for that, not the actual construction for it. So I'll share the screen real quick. So again, we're talking a pedestrian bridge somewhere in this area. One of the things from the city's point of view is because we're not sure yet what level of development is going to take place on the east side. We're requested that the alignment be out of the alignment for a potential road there. If at some point we needed an actual vehicle bridge for full traffic, this, this pedestrian bridge would then basically mesh with that, so both could exist at the same time. The county's request is a, for a preliminary engineering report to figure out an alignment and to get initial cost estimates on what a bridge in that area would be. Well, it wasn't very clear in the, in the letter, and I apologize for that. I think the county is asking for matching funds up to $20,000. So there's basically three partners, the county, the city and the schools, I believe. And each would be on the hook for $20,000 at the high end of the estimate, which would be $60,000. Currently, there's not a funding source for this. It would just come out of general fund reserves, which are a pretty healthy place and could absorb $20,000 as far as that goes. But this would then connect the Mayor's Landing Dog Park area, the Moja Dog Park area, with the Meyer River View Trail, and you'd actually end up with a loop, be able to access through the city and then back out to the O Street Connector, which is, would be a nice feature. So that's the basic introduction. I can see Jean Marie's on, if you'd like to ask any questions from the Parks and Trails Committee.
Jean Marie, do you have anything to add? And then what we can do is ask questions, clarifying questions, and then we'll move it to public. So Jean Marie, from what has been presented, do you have anything to add?
Sure, I'm Jean Marie Souveney with, on Sixth Street, Chair of the Parks and Trails Committee. And if you've had a chance to read the letter, what I did is try to document for you the public interest in a pedestrian bridge at that location. And it goes back quite a long ways. I think one of the earliest ones since I've been here was 2007 and eight, when there was a joint county and city task force that looked at greenways and parks. They recommended a trail here. The 2011 Parks and Trails Master Plan also has a proposal in there for a pedestrian bridge. They called it the Mayor's Landing Myers River View Trail Yellowstone Bridge, a purpose-built pedestrian bridge. Since those, we've had a number of surveys of people, including our Outdoor Recreation Survey last, or in 2019, where there is continuing support for a pedestrian bridge across the river. People are excited about the idea of being able to travel along View Vista from Mayor's Landing across the bridge over to Myers River View Trail or Myers Lane, actually, and over to the BLM property. So we have, we supported this several years ago when they, county did a presentation at Mayor's Landing to try to get some funding. That didn't happen and we're excited about this opportunity now to, to move this forward. This again is the preliminary engineering report, which we think would create a lot of the information and data that we as partners with the county and I think the hospital could use to then raise funds to help build the bridge itself if that were to happen. So we're in strong support, we have support on behalf of citizens.
Thank you, Jean Marie, for going through the support from the Parks and Trails. Any questions of Jean Marie and/or Michael before we open it? Okay, is there any public comment on Action Item B? Kristen, I see your hand up. And then I'll have Andrew.
Here I am again, Kristen Galbraith, 514 South 11th. I'm the part of the county that initially approached the city about this idea, as well as Livingston Healthcare. It's not the schools, but the hospital. We do have letters of commitment of up to 20,000 from both the county and the hospital for this P E R. It is for a freeze span bridge, no abutments in the river. That will be the alternative. There'll be researching in the location near where the old Buchanan Bridge once stood a couple of different times. As Jean mentioned, that P E R will be beneficial for future grant funded opportunities. We have a lot of ability as a county to apply for alternative transportation funding. This bridge would not be a vehicular bridge, but only in the case of emergency. Ballards could be removed for LHC emergency vehicles if it was necessary. But it is strictly for pedestrian use. And we would appreciate the city's support as the third entity for this very beneficial community project.
Thank you, Kristen. And I think we have Andrew next and then Kara.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Andrew Mitchell of 113 South Ninth Street. And I'd just like to say, as a senior citizen, I think this is a cost-effective investment in the health and fitness of our community, especially in the COVID environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Cara McNeely and I live at 16 Ninth Street Island. And I am going to first echo everything that's been said in front of me. I'm a representative of the Subcommittee of the Park, of the Fairgrounds and Parks Board. And my particular Subcommittee is particularly interested in the, the potential of a bridge project across the Yellowstone and also rails to trails. We did also submit a letter to the Commission. And so if that could be added to the agenda packet, that would be great. I, again, will just agree with everyone who's spoken in front of me that I really do believe that this is, the potential of a bridge here would be a great recreational and health benefit to our community and also an economic benefit. And maybe the, the one thing I would add is to, is just a little bit of a conversation about connectivity and being able to access public lands from literally ride down Main Street and then take it out and be able to ride up to Livingston Peak Trailhead and/or over to McLeod. I think that there's wonderful potential for shorter loops for walkers and runners and bikers. But there's also great potential for longer loops. And I just think as, as our town and county grows, maintaining and trying to preserve that connectivity when we can and when it's easier is a great thing.
Cara, you were cutting out, but are, are you, are you done?
I'm sorry if I was cutting out. Yep, I am done. If you have any questions, I'm happy to repeat things. And otherwise, it would all be contained in the letter that we sent if the, if it's added to the agenda.
We will add it to the agenda and to the record.
Great.
And we did, we did receive it and I know I read it, so.
I did as well, and she was not cutting out on my end, so.
Oh, I don't know.
Very good, might be you, so.
It might be me.
Just for what it's worth, yeah, and I did read the letter as well, so thanks.
Thank you for reading it.
I think next we have Erica. Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. My name's Erica Leitheiser, 528 South Eighth Street. Wish I had my daughter Claire here tonight because she also supports this project and loves to speak up for Parks and Trails. Really supportive of this project. I echo all comments before, really especially Cara's comments about the opportunity for connectivity from our community to the mountains. I really saw how the vision in Bozeman materialized over the course of a couple decades where they had a vision for Main Street to the mountains. And, and we have that opportunity here in our community, and I think that's really exciting. And in addition, I think I really value having close to town recreational amenities. It, it's wonderful to be able to, you know, ride our bike from our home and, and have access to trails really close by. So you don't have to put your bike on a car and go further out. So I think from a standpoint of having connectivity and close to town recreational opportunities, this is a really exciting project, so I'm very supportive and, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erica. Let me see, anyone else? No one else is in the chat? But any, anyone else in the public realm wanting to speak up? I see Sarah, go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Sarah Stans, 217 Southeast Street. And I am speaking on behalf of the Act of Transportation Coalition. I did submit a letter which has a lot of details around the connectivity, aligning with a lot of our missions on Parks and Trails, Act of Transportation Coalition, social benefits, economic benefits, et cetera. I think, you know, everyone's kind of said a lot of that, that is really nice to hear. So I hope you've received the letter. And the only extension would be to add on to a little bit of what Erica said on when we invest in trails in and around our town, it allows us to access these places from our homes. But often, you know, a lot of us are very privileged that we have access to cars whenever we want and we can drive to trailheads and we can go to these places. So I just wanted to put a plug in for, there's a lot of folks in our community that don't have the luxury to jump into a car to even get to Mayor's, to Mayor's River View Trail. And so this really just provides another avenue for them to reach that really beautiful trail and the public lands up on Myers Bench are covered flats. So thanks very much for this consideration. This is a really great project.
Thank you, Sarah. And we will add that letter to the record as well. Any other public comments? Don't see anyone in the chat. We will move to commissioner comments and questions. Any commissioners want to start?
Madam Chair, I was wondering if there'd been any estimate for a final cost on the, on the bridge, even a rough estimate. I mean, I think it's a good idea. I'm not trying to be negative about it, just to get an idea. Thank you.
Would that be a question for anyone in particular?
I wonder if Kristen could answer that, she might.
Jean Marie, maybe Michael.
Yeah, from estimates given by our contracted county engineer. And this is just estimates, obviously, at this point, based on alternatives that come out in the P E R. The cost to put or construct said bridge would be between $2 million to, up to $3 million. Please keep in mind, from the county perspective, we'll be looking for grant-funded opportunities to hopefully construct that mostly with private foundation or transportation alternative grant funding.
Thanks, Kristen.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Melissa, go ahead.
That's great to hear that quote. That's much less expensive than a bridge for vehicles. So just to point that out, that's nice to hear. Thanks, Kristen. Also, Michael, the hospital, a while back, I can't, time is strange with the pandemic, but a while back, the hospital was talking about building some housing over near the hospital, right? Wasn't there a purchase?
The hospital has purchased some land over there. There isn't a proposal for what will be built on it, but they were considering housing. I don't think they're planning on developing it, but I think that was part of, it would like it zoned for housing.
That's right. Thank you for that. I think that's like a really excellent thing to keep in mind with this project is what's, what we know the city land on that side of the river is zoned for. And we've talked about other pieces of land that are in the city limits and how people, especially kids, move around our community. And I just think, wow, what an awesome opportunity for school kids to walk over that bridge to go to school. It seems like it would be, it's, it makes a lot of sense to me for what we already do in Livingston and for what we know is probably coming with how the land has been purchased and zoned. So I really appreciate all the positive comments tonight, an affirmation of what apparently has been a decade plus long conversation.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone else? Okay, I guess I will speak on it. As the Commissioner on the Parks and Trails Committee, this is a, a project that has been discussed since, before I was on, or the Commissioner on the Parks and Trails Committee. And that, and that's been seven plus years. And I, I usually don't say this so blatantly, but I'm in major support of this project because it is something that the community has wanted for a long time, as Jean Marie referenced. And it also is what the committee has supported in reference to what the community wants. And I think that we should consider moving forward on it. It's been a long time coming. That's all I have. Anyone else? Okay. Any questions on the financial impact or where the monies would come from? Or support of the P E R? Okay. Then should we move to a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve Action Item B.
Second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please. Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner maybe.
Or.
Commissioner News.
Or. Motion passes. Our last action item tonight is to discuss approved deny. Our last action item tonight is to discuss a group deny request for funding from Educatio Independent School for Landscaping Project located at HRDC cottages on Reservoir Street. Mr. Cardes, would you like to start with that?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would. Emily's on here, I know, and she can speak to it as well. One of the things that we've got a lot of feedback on with the HRDC cottages is the lack of landscaping. So I think this is a great proposal in addressing that issue. Where I'm still at a loss on the city's end, and so I may just ask for more time to work this issue, is exactly how to, to fund this, like where to fund it from and to make sure that it is compatible with the other projects going up on, up in the vicinity. So basically, the new dog park that would go up, the fenced in dog park that would go up in the reservoir area, some other areas in this area. So I, I am supportive of this and so is city staff, but I would ask that you send it back to us to work with Emily to come up with a proposal and exactly how the city is gonna work with, with Educatio and bring a full proposal to you from the city's perspective. But I would like to turn it over to Emily so she can kind of give you this history and the, and the background on it.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you guys hear me? I'm on the phone.
Go ahead, Emily.
Thank you, Drell, or Madam Chair. It's exciting to be talking to all of you guys. And this project really came about, the students, we were, we were up on the hill going up to the, to the P and we looked at, we saw the cottages and the kids were really interested and excited about the tiny houses that they saw. And the one thing that they noticed that was missing were trees. And so we did some research, we called the city manager to ask who's, what these houses were and who managed these, who built these. And through our research and discovery, we got in contact with Martin Johnson and Sandra Green at HRDC. And we asked them if we could help with the tree planting and landscaping, do fundraising, organize volunteers, and they said, go for it, the project's all yours. So that was a little bit daunting once we got into it because we did understand the responsibility to create something up there that was aesthetic aesthetically pleasing for the community and the neighbors, also for the residents. And then also to design something that was compatible with the landscape, the dry and the drought kind of prevalent area. And so we contacted Jody Litchfield to help us with the project. She came in to the school and worked with the students over three different time periods. They researched different trees that were, that are drought resistant, wind resistant, wind tolerant. And so we came up with this plan. We picked a variety of trees that are either native or compatible with the area. And then Jody created the design that is really, I think, will stand the test of time just in terms of having edging in so that the landscaping looks nice and weeds, weed matting. The, there will be a, an individual irrigation system for each home, which the HRDC property management will pay for, so that won't fall onto residents. So that feels good too, so that we ensure that the trees will be watered and that the plants will live and look great up there. I think sometimes the fear of landscaping can be that, or trees, tree planting projects is you spend all this money on the plants and the trees and then they die because they don't have water. So all of that, that design and the estimate do include those aspects of the project. And it was just really exciting to work with Teresa with the irrigation solutions to come partner with the project, with Jody. We did contact Julie Kennedy and the Realtors Association, or, and with ERA to talk to the Realtors Association to also look into some fundraising. She had just mentioned that there were some residents up there who were concerned with the, having an affordable housing project in the neighborhood. And, and so that felt really good just to get some of the neighbors involved and then real, just other stakeholders involved in potential fundraising. I did mention the project to Quentin Schwartz and he thought that it was, he's friends with Jody, knows a lot of the other partners and collaborators. And so wanted to bring it before the commission just for potential funding ideas, which is really exciting because it would be amazing to get the project completed sooner or later, sooner than later, just because of weeds and, and just, it's exciting to think that this could be a keystone affordable housing project for the community where we do show the community that we are committed to beautiful, quality, affordable housing. Just not only for the residents, but also for the neighborhoods where those, where those communities develop. So I think it could be a really cool partnership. Chris from Woods Rose has offered to order trees and shrubs at a discount. Jody did everything pro bono. Teresa is, you know, trying to work us into the schedule, the busy irrigation schedule and landscaping schedule. So I think that it's Julie Kennedy is just, has just done some outreach to try to get some potential funds. So it's exciting to think that it could be kind of a collaborative community project. And then with your help, potentially get it done sooner than later. HRDC did commit an extra $5,000 to the project. They have already hydro seeded up there, so in that cost $7,000. They don't have any other additional budget for it than that. We, the school has a GoFundMe page that we are planning to launch with a kid, with a video from the kids that they put together about the value of trees. And so we would like to, you know, we plan to put that out to the community within an effort to like, say, you know, residents put in a dollar, five dollars, and we all, you know, came up with this together, we could do it. I think that the city's help was exciting just to think that we might be able to get it done sooner and, and just make a real statement that it's a priority and we want to get it, you guys want to help get it done. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank family for your thoughts on it and the hard work that you're putting into this project and other community members that have donated time. Thank you. Are we frozen up a little bit?
You sound good.
I'm okay, okay. I think you're all frozen on mine. I don't know what's happening, but usually I don't have these problems. So moving on, so it looks like the city staff is recommending that we give this back to the staff to do some, just the sources if this is what we'd like. Do we need to open it to public comment in general, which we should, we should open it to public comment, but also knowing that potentially next steps could be to move it back with that public as city for more discovery, area exploration on funding. Are you guys okay with that, moving it, just getting public comment?
I can't hear most, or like half of what Chair Holblin's saying. I don't know about the rest of you.
Yeah, you're breaking up quite a bit, Drell. I did get most.
I don't know what it's, it is tonight. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you want to open up public comment, right?
Yeah, open it to public comment, but that, the decision tonight could mean moving it all back over to the city to work on and explore different funding sources or possibilities with this, if it's, if it is possible. But sending it to the city, back to the city is one of our options, and that's what the city is requesting. So we can open it to public comment and then kind of look at how we want to move this. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Any public comments? I might need some help from commission if I keep freezing up.
You're fine so far.
Okay. Any public comments on this project? Any public comments? Okay, I don't see any public comment on it yet. Okay, we'll close it to public comment and open it to commissioner. Any questions from the commission? Or comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I thought this is kind of a unique project. I know we've gotten a lot of heat for, from residents for allowing that up there, what an eyesore it is. And, you know, damned if you do, and damned if you don't, you know, to try to find transitional, you know, affordable housing and stuff like that. I think HRDC has done a darn good job of working with the city and trying to make, you know, affordable housing happen here in town. And so I, looking at this project, you know, you know, no, you know, putting in a little bit or whatever, you know, it took just, you know, it's a good pay of that for it. That, hey, the city is committed to making affordable housing look nice and stuff like that. And exactly, definitely the kids at Educatio are striving to do as well. And I admire them for that effort, but that's all I have to say at this. And yeah, I would like to see it go back to the city and look at other alternatives because, you know, for its funding, because there are a lot of, you know, priorities in this town. And, you know, how do we pick winners and losers? So thank you. I yield, madam.
All right, thank you, Quentin. Anyone else?
May I have the floor?
Yep, go ahead.
Thanks. I am, want to acknowledge an email that the commission got from the chair of our tree board, speaking as an individual. I don't know if you all got a chance to see it, but he, he, he said he does support this project in concept. And he also brought up several points about where we are, where we could also be investing money on trees in general, on public land, like public city property and not just investing in a private property project. And so I guess what I would like to see is, you know, I do, I agree that I think this is important to invest in the north side and into these kinds of projects that benefit our community. And there are going to be some changes in that neighborhood that were already mentioned. And I think it's great to spread out those assets across our community and beautify different neighborhoods. So I'm, I'm glad to see that people are looking across the tracks to the north side and what can be improved. And I think that Marshall brought up some excellent points. Did you all get his email, commissioners? Okay, I was thinking maybe.
Yeah, I did, and I did respond to Marshall's.
I was just thinking.
Email as well.
I was thinking this might be valuable to, I don't know if the appropriate step would be to, well, probably to share this with Michael so he can see the points that Marshall is making. And I, I wouldn't mind seeing a more holistic plan than just one project, but see some of the things that he's addressed and see how those could be addressed in conjunction with this proposed project. I think that there's a lot of opportunities to invest in our urban forest. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, are you saying, Melissa, to pass it back to the tree, or some like thinking bigger picture and projects like this and pass it to the tree board for some recommendation?
Well, I'm saying like this, the proposed project before us tonight, I think is like $25,000. And it looks like we're struggling to meet our own tree budget for the city of $13,000. And we know we have the Emerald Ash Borer Plan that's getting worked on and going to be coming before us soon. And we have a lot of boulevard trees that are going to be expensive to deal with as we start implementing that plan. Plus, we have a lot of other parks in town where we want more trees. I'm just thinking there's a lot of ways that money could be invested. And so he brings up a good point. Does it make sense to just fund a new idea when we have ongoing budget shortfalls in other areas? I think we even have like a matching, I don't know how active it is anymore, but some sort of like, isn't there some sort of tree fund or like matching tree fund that's not utilized? There's some small budget line for this. It's a few hundred dollars, I think. I think Michael's nodding his head, but I can't tell for sure. I think there's a lot of opportunities is what I'm saying. And so I think it's, he's raising some good points that there's probably a lot of ways we could be investing in trees aside from a a project on private property. Does that make sense, Chair Holblin?
Yes, I, I guess I, I would love to hear your next steps, but maybe let's get some feedback and then what are some possible next steps forward?
Well, yeah, and it's sort of like balancing it with like what our strategic plans and things are. So I think there's a way to move new things forward, but I think we have to balance that too with our, what we've already committed to as a city. So it would be interesting to hear, you know, what city staff has to say, because this is their full time job, thinking about these things. Um, and how we might balance those things, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Mel says no.
Oh, yeah.
Makes tremendous sense.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair, can I address commissioner notes or?
Go ahead.
Just, I, you know, don't know where the $25,000 number came from. When I, you know, initially talked to Michael about getting this, on the agenda, we were looking more like $5,000 or 10%, but I didn't, we didn't see the whole, whole proposal. We were, I was looking only at half of it. So hey, it'd be nice to give him $25,000, but I don't think that's realistic. And I wasn't looking at it quite like that, so. That's just where I stand on it.
Um, okay. I think it appears, it appears to be that there's some concerns with the funding source. The city already is, and city manager has proposed that if we look forward with this type of project, where is the funding coming from? What, redefining that a little more clearly? But there's some concerns from the commission on just the project in general and steps or process a little bit. I, I would like to just a couple of different comments. I do think projects like this should again go to the correct committees or in this case, the tree board and/or the parks and trails to have conversations as well about projects that they recommend that are related to trees, for example, since it's about trees or parks or projects related to the parks and trails. So just, I feel like that may have been missed. A second part of this is the concerns that I have heard have a lot to do with the public versus private. And so in, this is property that is sold to a buyer, correct? And, and this is like a, a home that you purchased and have a mortgage on or?
No, these are, let, let me just correct you there. I do HRD. No, these are, let, let me just correct you there. I do, um, HRDC retains ownership of all these homes. These are rental, no, these are rentals only. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, yeah.
Were I, I thought these were, um, homes to purchase for when we were presented it, it was homes for purchase. But in, with support and affordable and um, Michael, do you know?
If I remember correctly, HRDC retains ownership of the land. And there's deeds, deed restrictions on the houses themselves, but I think they are purchased.
Okay, I stand corrected. Thank you.
Yes, partially. So the, the land remains with HRDC and their deed restricted and how far they can grow in value. But I do think they are purchased, but I would have to double check on that. It's been a while since I've looked at it.
And HRDC is a a publicly public, private entity?
HRDC is, is a nonprofit, basically. Right. So they're not a government entity, but they do, uh, receive a lot of government funding as far as needs go.
Okay. And so I, I think that is my main point is the concerns are that I have heard are about, you know, are we, what can of worms are we creating? If we support something, um, like this, is this the best use of our funds, um, our taxpayers' money to support something like this? Now, I, I know that we do assist in and different things when we can, when it comes to, uh, affordable housing. So there's some definite connections we have, but this is just another part of that that we have to consider. And landscaping and funding, I, is, do we go as far to, is it about impact? Fees or, and we focus on that, or do we start looking at helping to landscape and add more trees to our community, which you know, just kind of a different look at, um, how we are funding different things. Um, because I know we haven't been presented with this type of project before and since I've been on the commission. Um, it's unique. So I guess we're to the place, I'm, I don't know, Warren, do you have anything to say or Mel? But we're to a place of recommending that we said, I mean, we can either uh, deny, we can approve, or we can send it back to the city for more consideration and, um, look at, uh, steps or courses.
Duro.
Um, there'll be another tree board meeting coming up here shortly and I can, uh, we can, I, I just hate to zoom in all these committees, but I like to be there. See them, but I think this can be brought up in front of the committee and see if we can come up with ideas. Uh, and go from there. So, uh, and it was nice that they got an award here recently for the tree board. So, uh, they can make that as a, uh, something we'll talk about next meeting this month.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so commissioners, Mel's proposing that we have the, have this as an agenda or ask the tree board to put it down as an agenda item as well as what are other steps? Any do we want to give it back to the city as Michael was proposing? Or, um, do you want to make a decision to approve or deny?
Um, true.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that, um, in a more direct, uh, solution, I think back to the city as to recommend alternate, uh, funding sources. Um, that would keep it moving along rather than, uh, uh, just, uh, recommendations for other things, uh, actual funding, uh, could be, uh, the next step again from, uh, alternate sources other than the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Warren. Anyone else?
I'd like to send it back to the city, just see that with, uh, with, what they might come up with, that they can see maybe help with the, you know, grant writing or, um, you know, helping to steer them in the right direction. Funding, so, um, that that's not too big of a burden. Thank you.
Michael, do you have any feedback on that? On just the burden or the work or the, your thoughts on if it was brought back to you? Um, the the intent of that work?
No, I, we're, we're in the middle of budget season, so this is pretty much what I'm doing all the time. So I can, I can look at, at different ways we can fund this. I mean, there, there's certainly other opportunities. Um, you know, we can look at, at in-kind donations, maybe for some of the work, depending on what it is, if it's hooking up to water, other areas and see if we can include it in some of the improvements we're looking at across the street in the dog park. Um, there's options. I don't know what'll work exactly, but we'll try and come up with some different, different ideas for you to look at and, you know, determine, um, what, what we might be able to do.
All right, great. Thank you. So I think we can move forward then. Does it would be like to, would someone like to make a motion to, um, or a recommendation and emotion?
Yeah, make a recommendation that, uh, we put it back, uh, have the city explore some actions for them. Thank you.
Can I amend his motion?
Yes, please.
And, and Mel's suggestion of also taking it to the tree board.
Oh.
Can you, okay, say it. Say it together. You guys were cutting out. I just want to make sure it's clear. Um, Quentin, what is your motion? And then with the amended, uh, taking it to the tree board?
Yes, sending it back to the city and, um, to, you know, look for alternative funding for them perhaps and, uh, and having the tree board weigh in as well.
All right. So our motion, um, from Commissioner Schwartz, do we have a second?
Second.
The motion by Schwartz, second by Friedman, uh, roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
For.
Chair Freeman?
For.
Mr. Maybe?
For.
Commissioner News.
For, all right. Great, thank you. Um,
Chair, just to answer one of your questions, uh, Sonia Wheeler's on and she did let me know that those houses are rentals. So they are all rentals. As far as-
Oh, okay.
Thanks. I know I was right. I'm right once in a while.
Thank you, Sonia. Um, we're moving on to uh, same manager comments.
Uh, thank you, ma'am Chair. I just have two quick ones for you this evening. Um, one, we just filled the animal control officer position, uh, which is great. Um, so while Judy will still be sorely missed, it's nice to fill that position and, and be able to, um, at least replace some of the work she was doing. So we did get that accomplished just today, actually. And then my request to you as a commission is the, um, the staff did our budget offsite for the general fund last week, so we are ready, at least we will be shortly, to present, uh, the general fund to you guys. So we just need you to schedule a time and when you would like to go over general fund budget.
You're freezing up again for me, but so we, so you're saying we need to schedule a general fund meeting? Okay, uh, and, um, Michael, can you just clarify? So with the, um, animal control officer, what type of position is that? Where, where does it come from? Which?
Uh, which will not be inside the Livingston Police Department.
So it would be a police officer doing that as well, or is it a, uh, someone within the police department? So it might be, um, another employee?
Yeah, they're within the police department. It's a new employee and they are not a sworn officer.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, yeah, we have a lot of planning for times. Is that it for you, Michael? Um, okay, so I do have to on, on dates. Um, can we just approach dates or, uh, and, uh, and address some times and days coming up? Are you okay with that right now?
I really want to get through the growth policy before we schedule too much more. Because friends, it's this thick. This is what you have looked to look forward to reading commissioners. And so I, it's going to be a lot. And so I just want to be very conscientious of how much we're committing to, because it's probably going to be a big meeting.
And, um, well, right now we have a couple of things. We have that meeting on the 13th, which I'll talk about in a second. Um.
What meeting is that? I don't have that written down. What meeting?
That's the we have a closed session on the 13th.
I did not get that memo. I do not think. Unless we decided on it and I just forgot to write it down.
I don't have it either.
You don't have it either?
We just rested at the, um, uh, I think two commission meetings ago on, but we moved it later just because yeah, that's on the 13th of May, just later because knew of the work with the growth policy.
Quinn didn't have it either, so I feel better. So that's the, um, is that the employee survey?
Right.
Okay, thank you. And is that at, what time is that?
We had it at 5:30, but I have had something come up, so I won't, um, be able to be there.
Okay.
I will be out of state actually that day. Um, I'm wondering if we could move that one, if any way we can move it to the beginning of the week. I know we chose not to at the time, but is there any consideration on moving that to the 10th instead?
Right open for me.
Yeah, I think that's good. May 10th?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then that stays within at least close so that we still have time for the growth policy as well.
Okay, good.
Little more time. Um, so the growth policy you guys are having and Melissa, you will have a meeting tomorrow night?
Yes.
In your is you have, is this the last one before or is there one more?
I cannot predict what the planning board will do. But this is scheduled to be the final one. Could Matthew though come on screen and confirm that I'm remembering correctly? This should be the final one where we make a recommendation or not? Okay, thanks, Matthew.
And then will it come to the commission at the first meeting in May then that quickly? Or do we need more time, um, just to, uh,
I would ask, I would ask Matthew.
Matthew.
I'm probably looking at May 18th just to, um, turn around the document and staff report and gather all the materials and public comment and all of that. Um, so expect May 18th. It's possible to do it on the fourth, but I think that's going to be too tight of a turnaround after the recommendation.
And then the other part of it is we definitely need it before a long time before that. So that's also part of that timeline. So, you know, normally we get most of our information, um, by Thursday. That's obviously not enough for a growth policy uh, read through to the depth that we need. So does that hinder the 18th? Matthew, that means you guys would have to have it done at least probably a week or two before. Probably two weeks.
We can get that done.
Okay. All right, great. So we have a little bit of planning done. Um, then we sub-budget. So we should have our general fund budget meeting, which takes two to three hours, it seems to in, um, in the past. Do we have a recommended day? That that would work?
Well, Chair Hoagland,
Mm-hmm.
Considering that it's going to take a couple of weeks, right, for you all probably to get to wade through the growth policy. Do you want to do it after the 18th so that you're not all trying to read more than one dense thing at a time? Or what do you think?
Well, I mean, I know it's tough, the growth policy. I, I feel like we could do a budget meeting beforehand. Before that. I know we're, instead of having them next to each other, we would have them like like fraud. So maybe budget, so we can get one in. We, we do need to get them done because the, we have to be done by June and we're-
Be harder for you all than me because I've already read the growth policy several times now. So it'll be.
I mean, what about the week of the like-
A man of charity, you just had. Yeah, just with the way, you know, faith presents the budget and Michael and stuff like that and the system that we have, it's gone so smoothly. I'm, I'm not intimidated by any stretch of the imagination on being able to sc- schedule that before, you know, growth policy thing. So just might weigh in on that.
What about next week then?
I'm, I'm, I'm flexible as heck for anything, so.
I, I would say we try for next week or the following week, we'd have a double, we'd have a commission meeting and or, and a budget meeting in one week. So.
Next week is better for me.
Okay, what day? Have to look at.
Looks like Faith has the calendar up.
That's sweet. I love it.
What is, what's everything you always wanted to know about the city, but were afraid to ask?
That is our next, uh, Facebook live streaming event.
So Michael will be at that for sure. So that would not be a good day to choose.
Yeah.
That what, I didn't see which day of the week.
The 27th, Tuesday.
Can you pull, thanks Faith. Can you pull up the calendar again? Thank you.
Um, so which month are we in right there?
April.
April, okay. What about, I cannot do it the 20, 29th. Again, Thursdays I have suddenly loaded a little more than I normally would. Um.
Was Monday bad?
Monday is good that week. Next Monday or two, or sorry, uh, Wednesday, Monday or Wednesday.
Wednesday I have a meeting.
How soon can Michael get us the paperwork if we do it Monday? Can, how soon can you give us the budget documents?
I could send you our draft budget, but not the presentation that I'd like to give you with it. Um, I can probably get that to you. I can probably get the presentation to you by Monday. Uh, but that wouldn't give you any time to review it.
Well, it's the numbers. We need more than the presentation though, right?
Um, I think the presentation will actually probably be more useful. Um, it's because it'll, it'll break it down and give some of the reasons and, and stuff behind it. The rest of it's just the line item. Uh, line item budget and there's some, it's hard to pick some stuff out of that sometimes if, if you're not working with it every day.
Well, if he can't get it to us till Monday, then we should not do the meeting on Monday or we won't have time to look at it.
Yeah.
Mel, Mel, did you have a conflict on Wednesday? The 28th?
The 28th I have a meeting that night.
Oh, and I do have, I have parks and trails.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we have it a little bit, I guess. I mean, if we did an earlier meeting that day, then but often work gets in the way of that for some of us, so, um.
Let's not say Friday. Let's just like not do that to ourselves.
No, I refuse. Um.
So then the next week?
Yep, we have commission. Let's see. Yeah, it would be a double meeting week. Yeah, it would be a double meeting week. So the week of. The third through seventh, we have commission on Tuesday and. Cinco de Mayo.
Mike could bring tacos.
We can. Yes, just tacos. What do you think?
What about Monday on that week? If he gets us the presentation. Next week, then we'd have some time to look at it and then we could knock it out on Monday before the commission meeting is on Tuesday.
Okay, what do you guys think?
Worked for me.
What, on a Monday?
May third?
May third. And we usually go at five thirty. Is that a good time or earlier later?
I think it's good. I mean, especially if the public wants to come, it's the time that they're used to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so. There we have it.
What time?
At five thirty.
Five thirty.
On May third. And then we have a commission meeting the next night on May fourth.
And it's just the general fund, so he breaks this down into parts for us.
Yeah.
And then takes two to three hours depending.
How good his presentation is? No pressure?
Yeah.
And then to be the, the fun guy in the party, don't forget, we'll then need. A enterprise fund meeting after that, and then two meetings to get the budget passed. If we wanna get it passed by the first of July.
Yes.
Good.
Busy. All right.
Productive.
So we moved, so then we have that meeting on the tenth. Thank you, you guys. That one won't take so long. That's at five thirty as well. And then. Anything else on our meetings?
Yeah, I'm missing. Yeah, um, cuz at some point, school's gonna end and there's gonna be vacation, so we should think about. The other executive meetings. Michael's review will be after the employee survey.
So we'll do that probably towards the end of the month.
Do you wanna just wait and schedule it later?
Yeah, let's, why don't we schedule that like at the next commission meeting?
Okay.
What do you think? And then knowing that we had, wanted to get that tenth. Meeting in beforehand, and then, then we have that last week of the month. Possibly, if that works for everyone, or that second to last week, there might be a day in there as well.
Right.
We're getting a little behind because we did put it off one month. It should be done in April.
Yep.
Try get it done in May.
I mean, I think we could. Let's see. Is there a planning board that week? A planning board meeting that week on the, Faith, can you pull up the? Calendar, please. Is it on the nineteenth? Of May? So that the last couple of weeks are gonna be busy for me and it's already filling up. So if you would want to do Michael's review in May. I might just suggest we schedule it before all available dates are gone.
Okay, I, I would suggest that the planning board take a month off.
I mean, I am in favor of that idea and I also am one of like seven people on the planning board, so I don't, I don't get to unilaterally make any decisions. Although, I think we all deserve probably a vacation and a party after the last several months of what we've been doing.
Yes. Well, what if we just tentatively say the twenty fifth then?
The twenty fifth is a commission meeting, isn't it?
No.
Or do I have, okay, I have my calendar off. So we. I could do the twenty fifth.
Or the twenty fourth. Or the twenty seventh, I guess, and I mean.
I could not do the twenty seventh, but I could do the twenty fourth or the twenty fifth. If anybody wants to just pick a date. Do you wanna? So yeah, since it's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And then Michael will just have to decide if he, how he wants to do it, since it's his review, right?
Discuss that it, it can be closed or open and he, you can make that decision later, Michael. We can talk.
All right. Thanks for pounding out that schedule.
Yes.
It's called May Madness.
All right, uh. Commissioner comments?
Can you run through the dates again?
Uh, Mel, I was gonna ask if Faith could just send us an email of what she heard us say. Or maybe if she could say it out loud to make sure we're on the same page and then send us an email later.
Okay, I would like that.
Thanks, Faith. That's a lot of pressure.
Yeah, look at that. I love that.
Did she already do it?
Yeah.
She already like magically put it in there?
Okay, do, do we need to say it over again, or Mel, is that okay to look at the calendar that Magic, Faith did? Do we need to say it?
Look at the calendar, Mel.
That was fast, Faith. Good job. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna leave it at that. Go ahead, Melissa.
Um.
Your comment.
Yes, I have to say, I've, we've been getting a lot of emails lately and. Faith is just a great example of the city staff and how helpful they are and make our lives easier. Thanks, Faith. What a tangible example. Um, I wanted to share with you. You've heard me say it and hold this up a couple of times, at least tonight. But, um, I'll be doing a more proper thank you. The next time you see me hold this up at a meeting, you'll all have your own copy of the growth policy. This has been. An interesting, long and difficult process. Probably some of. Definitely some of the most consistently long meetings, but also. It has not been straightforward and easy all the time. Just so you all know, there's been a lot of conversation and. Just intense collaboration and. So much work that the planning board has put into. Talking about all the items that we vote on, not to mention the hundreds of comments that Matthew has gone through. On behalf of the city. And participating with the board and implementing the changes into the draft. So when you see this, it's probably gonna look pretty different than the first draft that you saw. It's been an intense amount of work and I, I'm hoping that what we're gonna get is. You know. The heavy lifting done at the board level, so the commission doesn't have to dive into. Sixty hours of comments like we did. Um, I do wanna just tell you the tomorrow night's. Meeting is more minor edits. We've gone through all the chapters and we did. Readability and cleanup at the last meeting along with. A few of the very last short chapters to cover. So this is really just like the very final edits. We're gonna be going over tomorrow and then voting on a recommendation. So, um, it's been a lot of work and I'm hoping that you'll be able to tell by the time you see it next month. I'm really excited. I wish that there was some way we could like celebrate that would be. Like appropriate because it feels anticlimactic that we're so close and it's such a big deal. I think it's such a big deal and such an exciting. Such an exciting place that we're coming to. So I'm excited for this to come before the commission and for you all to hear more from. Any board members that come and of course from Matthew. And to see it for your own self. So that's all that I have to say tonight. And thank you. Yeah.
Thanks for your hard work. On it. I know you're one of many, but we really appreciate it. Not an easy task.
Has not been an easy task.
Yeah, and I've listened in and I definitely. See how hard it is. Yes, um, and how much, but it's very important work, so. Um, all right, uh, Warren.
I'm just gonna echo you, the, uh. This is a very, very important document and, and. And all other decisions associated with it. Have to be made carefully and in conjunction with the recommendations in it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Mel, go ahead.
Um, great meeting. Um, a lot of stuff coming on us. Yeah, it's, and, and I appreciate everybody digging in and coming up with some answers. I was afraid of this meeting tonight because of the agenda. But we worked our way through it and I think we're on the right track, so. I appreciate everybody's help in that regard. Yeah, and I, it's gonna be busy the next few months, so. Get ready for that, but a lot, it's all good stuff, so I appreciate everybody's work. Amen.
Thank you, Mel. You're muted.
Yep. Lot of thoughtful input on everything tonight, on every single item on the agenda. That, that's good to see. Looking at my notes here, um, I would like to, uh. I'm gonna look for a second to get, uh. Fireworks ordinance, um. For the city. On the agenda. Yeah, and I'd like to see what Courtney has come up with it. I'm, I'm glad she did that, um. And I'm gonna, I wanna keep my board and I wanna keep that thing going.
And I'd like to see, just add to it all since I'm seconding, second team. But I would see maybe of innovative kind of interesting look at this. It doesn't have to. Necessarily just directed to one business and how to, how do we better? Or do this better as a city.
Right, yeah, and I agree, yeah, and I.
And what can? Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be getting together with Courtney on this and see what you've got, so. I'm sure there's something else, but it is. We forgot to extend the meeting or maybe not.
We did, we did. I ignored that. It was already just passed and I was.
Yeah, so at this point, um. Great meeting, Madam Cherry ran a great meeting as usual, so thank you.
Thank you. I have only one thing and that is, uh. Considering looking at in-person meetings. Just, you know, thinking like historically through COVID that. Historically, can we use that word with COVID? I don't know. It feels like it. Remember back a hundred years ago? COVID started. But we, you know, we, I think we're at forty-four or more percent. Vaccinated in our county. And that was last week or something and then, and it's changing very quickly. They're proposing, you know, adding in twelve to fifteen year olds or sixteen year olds as well as. You know. Uh, gatherings are happening in mass areas like at schools. Schools are, you know, with distancing of three, of six feet instead of six. So I think we can have a safe meeting. And done well, in person, and I feel like it's time to start considering it. Yeah, the, you know, other entities in the community are, are starting to have live meetings and the school board. I think the county. Has for some time, is that right? I feel like it's been at least a recent past, but. For some time and there's other. You know, entities that are doing the same, so. Um, what do you guys think?
I'd be for it.
I think I'm like the lowest priority commissioner. Like the last on the list of, um, do you know what I mean? Like the last on the list to have something available to them. For vaccines and so.
It's open to everyone.
I know it's, I know it started, it started being open to everyone this month. And so by the time the folks like in my cohort. Have had to like the full round and the plus the two weeks, it'll be, I think, like mid to late May. At the soonest. For the full benefit. Does that make sense? The math, you know what I'm talking about, like the two shots? So I think it's like hopefully by the summer, I'm thinking by the summer. It seems like it would be a natural thing to think about this summer. Which I think is on par with what you're saying.
And right now, he's still looking at a masked environment.
Yeah, it would be masked. So Melissa, you're not comfortable. She had to go, but, um.
I'm, I'm pulling a Durrell. I can still hear you.
Yeah. So. Any other thoughts, Mel? Michael, can anyone from the city give us some thoughts on what has been occurring more often? Just like I said, you know, all age people are attending meetings in other realms, masked, distanced as much as possible. Um, including, you know. Six feet or more in public meetings, but, uh. What do you guys think?
I, I think my main thing is public participation, um, as long as we can still offer Zoom or some. Type of public participation, I don't know.
When I wonder, that's, I think you're right, like, I, I sort of feel like I'm not. I'm just not into the one or the, I, I think it needs to be one or the other. I think we either continue a Zoom for a short.
Yeah.
This, but we're not gonna do both. Because the management of that as well as, we do need to start like looking each other in the eye. And have a public engagement and engaging. You know, together. I don't think that Zoom is the best way to engage.
No.
May just state in my opinion, but. I think we lose a lot.
So I think, um, I can't believe you're not like the biggest fan of Zoom. Just kidding. Are you zoomed out?
Because I started this way long ago, more way before you guys did, so.
So I, um, well, I'm a remote worker, so I've been doing it a while too.
That's true, you probably longer.
So, not that it's a Zoom contest for sure. It's not a contest I need to win, but, um. We should be. Hearing. Ideas about how that would look then from the city since. Um, that would take some doing on the part of city staff. To figure out what that space would look like and where it would be that would work for the public to attend and be spaced out and all that.
And coordinated with the public health officers while, you know, just, you know, what's rec- what's recommended at this stage of where we're at.
Right, and there's still.
Yeah, cuz we still, we still have. Um, numbers we have to contend with, um. You know, in certain spaces, so.
Well, I think those numbers are, are within reason. I think.
Right, no, they're, yeah, they're changing.
Yeah, it, it's changed quite drastically, so. Can, how about if, I mean, I would like it sooner than later and I'm just, you know, I'm only one of five, but. I. Would you guys want to have the city just give us some options on space and et cetera at the next meeting? And then consider it for the following meeting?
That sounds good. I'd go with that.
Can we have open meetings, um, public meeting, I mean, I guess, non-Zoom? Let me say that again. Those other meetings, though, because of. Like for the city managers' evaluation, et cetera. I mean, and maybe even the budget or the budget could be. Um, because that's right before it.
Right.
It was Zoom, and then the next meeting. Mission meeting will have more information, and then, um. City manager evaluation, uh. Would be in. In, uh, live.
You lost me, which, what date are you thinking about in person with this lineup of meetings, I, I lost track of.
It, it would start after that commission meeting then. We would have in-person meetings from them on, in on how we can make it work.
So on the fourth, we have a commission meeting, we hear some proposal. Right?
Yep, of space and where we can make it. Work.
And then potentially on the eighteenth being in person? Is that what you're, okay, I just wanted to make sure it's fine.
And that meeting, um, that closed meeting, having that in person as well, because it's a small meeting. A small group.
Right.
Which.
The one on the tenth. Okay. She, can we?
If we can be, if we can be spread out and masked.
So, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, people are getting relaxed with their masks. And we're not all vaccinated yet.
It's not time to relax that, yeah, you gotta be vigilant, diligent.
We just need to be protective of the most vulnerable people that are gonna be there, and I think that's just a reasonable precaution to take.
And don't go to great falls. If you don't wanna. Be found on most people. There was like three masks in the whole community. I'm not exaggerating, by the way. And I think the three were my family. Um. So. Yes, if we could, I want us to move forward in, um, in-person meetings as soon as possible, and, and I think. Our next step of discussing it, and Michael, please. Uh, what, we can have a conversation about some options, and then present it. Okay?
Very helpful from my point of view, is if each of you just sent me what you would like to see. Um, as far as obviously mass, but like for spacing, what you'd like to see.
Right.
Total number of participants, just so I can get a feel for what you as a commission would, would be comfortable with, if we went back.
Well. I think it's important we follow the guidelines, so that I'll, I'll. I'll approach you. And start the conversation, but. I mean, we have guidelines, we have county guidelines, we have CDC guidelines, and we have, um. Logic. So then we will just. Start with that, it won't be about opinions, it will be about guidelines.
And then.
Wanna meet the minimum guidelines.
Is, Quentin, are you still on the health board?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's why I said I, I'd like to defer to the. County health officer, cuz these, um. Things are changing at least every two weeks, you know, far as easing restrictions, stuff like that, so. Um. I'd, I'd like to defer to. Laurel and say, hey, yeah, you guys are good to go on this and that.
Well, is the commissioner on that board, can you just like?
I, I will, I will.
That conversation and.
I will.
Um, well.
And I'll look at the target dates you're talking about, Dorell, yeah.
Good, so I think that's it, sorry, um. It's a long meeting, but I think we got a lot done.
Yeah.
So.
Good meeting.
We have a motion for adjournment.
Now Mel's muted, I'll make motion. So moved.
Say, so moved, okay, all in favor? This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at nine twenty-seven. Thank you, everyone.
And I, take care, guys.